Have everybody here so we can get started, okay? Um, I would like to call to order the August third, third, twenty twenty-three meeting of the planning board. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The town of Burlington will be holding the August third, twenty twenty-three meeting as a remote meeting. The governor issued an executive order on March twelfth, twenty twenty, authorizing remote meetings under general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty, and extended by chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Um, this, because this meeting is fully remote, we'll be taking all votes via roll call, so Madam Chair, I'd like to do a roll call vote for, um, attendance. Um, so Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Um, Vice, um, Chairman Rappelport's not with us, uh, Member Clark Sutherland.
Yes.
Uh, Member Covino. Ernie's muted, but I see. Uh, Member Impemba.
Member Impemba will be joining us shortly.
Uh, Member Natola.
Yes.
And Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Excellent. So, um, for, so this is a fully remote meeting, so those, um, seeking to participate may do so via the following. Um, townofberlingtonwebx.com, um, is the URL, and our meeting number is two, three, three, two, zero, zero, one, nine, five, seven, zero. You can join us by phone, um, at six, one, seven, three, one, five, zero, seven, zero, four. Um, members of the public who are looking to participate, um, please raise your hand, and staff will be sending you a request to unmute yourself. So right now, everybody's muted, um, and planning board members are unmuted, but members of the public are muted, so when, when it's your turn to speak, raise your hand and we'll unmute you. Um, we're being broadcast on, on the Bcat government channel, we can find on Comcast ninety-nine, RCN fifteen, um, and Verizon forty, um, page forty-one, and streamed on Facebook Live via the Bcat Facebook page. Um, with that, I'll hand it over to, um, Chairman LaRue.
Okay, thank you. Um, we are, we do have one continuance tonight, if I could have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to take, to make a motion to contin- do you want me to read the item?
Take item six.
Okay, take item six G out of order for discussion purposes.
Uh, Chairman LaRue.
Um, we need a second. Someone's second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, I say yes.
Um, Member Sutherland?
Yes.
Member Covino? Yes, I think, so, um, hold on, the vote for saying Caleb, have you, um, requested to unmute all of the planning board members?
Yes, I have. Ernie, if you look in the middle of your screen, there should be a pop-up that says unmute.
And then Bill, the same for you, if you're not able to be, if you're not.
Send him another request.
Yeah, we'll send another request, so timeout.
I, I muted myself and then it locked myself back up, so.
Okay, yeah, so you got a key, yeah, planning board members, don't mute yourself.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, item six G is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point three point one point fourteen. Wireless communications facilities, which are subject to section eight point four point zero, shall be permitted in the wireless communications overlay districts in accordance with the map depicting the districts and the provisions of section one point O of the zoning bylaws. Of the zoning bylaws, three twenty-eight to three thirty Cambridge Street Dish Wireless LLC is the applicant.
So, um.
Go ahead. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to the planning board meeting of August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated August third, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Liz, did you have something you wanted to say before we vote?
I don't know if we fully, um, took the motion to take six G out of order for discussion purposes. I think we jumped the gun, so, so I'm gonna go back to the previous motion, so we're gonna do two roll calls.
Okay.
In a row, so the, for this roll call, we're gonna take the motion six G out of order, so Member, um, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Um, Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino. He's, he's nodding his head yes, um, Natola.
Yes.
And Gaffney.
Yes.
Okay, and then the next, I'm gonna do a roll call for, um, the motion to continue the item, so, um, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Um, Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino. He's nodding his head yes, um, Natola.
Yes.
And Member Gaffney.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, next we have announcements.
Um, and Caleb, I'm gonna have you do announcements.
Sure, okay, so this, um, Saturday is going to be Celebrate Burlington Day, which will be happening all day on the Town Common, where there's, uh, wide variety of activities for everyone of all ages. Um, I think there's gonna be a concert in the evening, as well as fireworks to cap off the night, to celebrate this great town. Um, the ZBRC Science Subcommittee will be happening August seventh at five thirty PM via Zoom. Uh, very important, the Mass DOT Public Information Meeting for the Route Three A Cambridge Street resurfacing. That is going to be August eighth, which is next Tuesday, at six thirty PM, and that's gonna be a completely virtual meeting. Um, and there will be a post on the Planning Board's social media page early next week, on next Monday, where you can find more information and the link to that. Um, the ZBRC will then be meeting on August ninth at six thirty PM via Zoom. The Sculpture Committee, um, will be meeting August sixteenth at eight thirty AM via WebX. And we have very exciting news that the Blanchard Wheeler Road Corridor Plan is now complete. Um, it is up, um, on the planning website, uh, for everyone to check out, um, and so it was a lot of, a lot of work, uh, with a lot of effort towards a great plan, so we would encourage everyone to take a look at that when you get the chance.
Thank you, Caleb. Um, next we have some updates regarding our Planning Board Department staff, Liz?
Sure, so, um, I've, um, been talking to, um, various members of the board for some time now, um, and I think it's appropriate, um, given, um, you know, his level of work, how quickly he's cut on in just a year, um, that our assistant planner Caleb, I've recommended that he get promoted to, um, Planner One, um, Development Coordinator, um, which is very exciting. Um, so in that role, he will obviously be helping us with permitting and long-range planning, but also doing, um, a lot of follow-up post-approval, um, so that, you know, all of the conditions that the board is, um, kind of imposing on our, um, applicants gets, you know, they, there's follow-through, and so he's gonna be there to help us with that, make sure we have all our paperwork that some of we forget about in the office, so, you know, he's been instrumental in helping us get through this year, it's been just the two of us. Um, and, you know, his work is excellent, he's quick to pick up on all sorts of things, and he's, you know, an independent worker, so, um, I am very pleased to recommend that he be, um, promoted to Planner One.
Okay, um, I'm trying to see where we have. Well, first of all, I could not agree more wholeheartedly with what Liz said, Caleb has been an excellent addition to our team. I don't know what we would have done this last year without him, he's really grown very quickly, and I think he's very ready for this new challenge. So, congratulations, Caleb. Um, I would like a motion, please, the, it's on the bottom of page two.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to promote Caleb Zimmerman from Assistant Planner to Planner One Development Coordinator.
Second.
Um, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Member Clark Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Um, Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you all so much.
Congratulations, Caleb, you do a great job.
Um, before we move on, do any other members have announcements that they would like to make at this time? Seeing none, I understand that, um, Todd Fremont Smith is here tonight and would like to provide us with a brief update on some ongoing projects happening at the Nordblum Campus.
Um, I do not see Todd's name.
Okay, well, maybe he can jump in later, and we can perhaps table this and take it, take it out of order later.
I'm very used to our seven o'clock date time start, would be my guess.
That's fine, we can move on, um. So, um, I'm going to ask that we take and I'm surprised at the order on this, I thought that item A was not going to be first. And know that Member Impemba wants to participate in this, and he is on his way, so I'm gonna ask that we take something else out of order.
Madam Chair, would you like to take, um, item B, which is, um, on page six, at the bottom of page six, um, out of order?
And that would be Lifetime Fitness? Yes, okay, um, so, I, do I need to make it, do it?
So, Madam Chair, may I take a motion to take item B out of order?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Um, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Um, Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item B is a continued discussion request for approval of a minor engineering change, one eighty-six Middlesex Turnpike. Lifetime Fitness is the applicant. And who is representing Lifetime Fitness today?
Good evening, Connor Nagle with VHB here.
Thank you.
I think you're probably all familiar with the project, may I share the screen? Um, may I make it easier?
Staff, is that, are you ready for that?
Let me, I can pull up the site plan, um, I thought we were gonna do the other thing, so let me get it, oh, I guess he has it up.
Okay.
Great, that worked. Um, so you're probably all familiar with the Lifetime Fitness facility on, uh, Middlesex Turnpike, one eighty-six Middlesex Turnpike. Um, this was originally approved, uh, back in two thousand sixteen, and at that time, uh, some of the parking, uh, down here, uh, adjacent to Middlesex Turnpike was land banked. Um, Lifetime Fitness, uh, having facilities elsewhere, uh, did think they'd need additional parking, uh, but agreed to land bank the parking and come back at such a time, not less than a year, uh, as conditioned in the decision, uh, to, to request this parking be built if necessary. Um, in the interim, as everyone's aware, we've had a pandemic and whatever that, uh, it's now, uh, it's now some five years since the facility opened. Uh, not their attendance is back to sort of pre-pandemic levels, and they do once again need all the parking. Uh, we submitted some, uh, swipe, uh, card swipe data, uh, as members swipe their cards going in the door to show the the demand, uh, for parking, particularly in the peak hours, exceed, um, the available parking on site. Uh, so at this time, we're requesting to unbank that. Uh, additionally, taking a look at the site to see, could we get some more parking in? Uh, we're looking to add some parking here, just in front of the building, uh, and a few spaces on the rear of the building, uh, over here. In total, it's a net gain, um, zoom in on the parking table here. You can see it's, it's a net gain, uh, on the site, but, uh, not very much, just nineteen spaces in total. Um, but that will help, uh, as the numbers, uh, showed in what we submitted, the, uh, the peak parking, uh, means the lot is full and people are driving around looking for spaces.
Mr. Nagle, just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the nineteen spaces are in addition to the banked spaces, is that correct?
Uh, that is, sorry, yes, that is correct.
And what, how many banked spaces are there?
There, there are, uh, sorry, there are nineteen additional banked spaces in total, uh, because there was a row here that gets wiped out. Uh, so the, the net gain, the, the net gain is thirty-nine o- over the, the entire, the three.
Okay, so thirty-nine spaces in total, and what number of those were banked previously?
Uh, sorry, mixing the, no, the, the gain of twenty, uh.
Okay.
And nineteen additional.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, thank you, please go ahead.
Um, we were in front of the Conservation Commission a couple of weeks ago, uh, with a, uh, request for determination. They issued a negative determination approving, uh, the construction of these spaces, uh, obviously subject to the planning board's approval. And, uh, the, these two, uh, sets of spaces are outside of the conservation jurisdiction, but do require a stormwater permit, uh, which will be heard by the COMCOM next Thursday. Um, there were a couple of comments, uh, from departments, those have been addressed. Uh, one was, uh, an additional, uh, accessible parking space. Uh, the, the parking space, the accessible parking spaces do get, uh, utilized, uh, quite heavily because of the physical therapy, uh, within the facility, so we have corrected the, the required number there. Uh, the drive-out width back here, uh, was commented on by the fire department, it was twenty-one, we had addressed that to make it twenty-four consistent, uh, with the rest of that drive-out. And there were comments regarding the left turns into the property, uh, which I understand, uh, from the police department have been an issue here, and the applicant has agreed to put some signage uh, in three locations here, uh, to call out, uh, no left turns, either out or inbound. Um, additionally, there was a, a request from the planning department to fix this sidewalk here. Uh, this is an old emergency access driveway from the former facility. Um, while it's not an actual driveway anymore, this is all landscaped through here. The sidewalk, the public sidewalk, uh, still had a curb cut, and the applicant has agreed to remove that and rebuild it as a consistent sidewalk in there. That's really all there is to the project, um, happy to answer any questions. Uh, go into any more detail on it if, if, uh, there are any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nagle, um, I'm gonna turn it over to staff for comments before I open it up to board members.
Um, so, so, um, staff, I have a few questions that, um, that we've been, um, kind of thinking about a little bit, um. Just kind of wanted to get some information about, um, the, um, if you could provide, you know, more information on that swipe data, so this is, you know, so this is great site plan, and you definitely have answered a lot of the questions from the previous meeting. Um, but, um, what, what, um, like, the swi- you know, part of the previous decision was that there needs to be, you know, data to, to back up why you need the spaces, so if you could go over that, I think that would be helpful. Um, and just a little bit more information regarding, um, you know, shared parking and the shared parking agreement between Lifetime Fitness and Nordblum, I think would be helpful for, for me, um, to understand it a little bit.
Uh, so I'll just start when I'm, uh, on this, uh, page here, there were three locations of shared parking, uh, originally agreed. Um, two of those are still in existence, they are adjacent properties, adjacent commercial properties. Uh, so those had, uh, time restrictions on them. Um, they were available from five PM to eight AM, uh, Monday to Friday, and from noon on Saturday and all day Sunday. Um, those time restrictions were the same on the two commercial properties, uh, which, uh, I'll note and I'll show on the swipe data fall, uh, outside, uh, the peak usage of the, the facility, which the peak usage coincides mostly with the gym use. Uh, while there are a lot of uses, obviously Saturdays are busy with, with, at a pool time, particularly in the summer. But the Monday through Friday use is what you'd expect for sort of gym membership. Um, the third lease is, has, uh, expired, um, or is no longer available. That is the, uh, lifetime residential property that was being utilized, uh, while it was vacant. Uh, so, um, great that that's being redevelopment, but unfor- redeveloped, but unfortunately, that means it's not available. So, the part, swipe data that we had submitted with this, uh, to break it down a little bit, I've, I've highlighted the peak times. We have, um, existing about five hundred, five hundred and eight spaces on the site. Um, most people that use this facility use it for longer than an hour. Um, and when you look at the peak times here, any two of those rows, uh, add up to, uh, more than the five hundred and eight on site. And, and again, these times fall outside of the available lease time, uh, while those spaces are being used by the commercial facility of the property they're on. Uh, thereby leaving a shortage of parking. And that, that's consistent, uh, as I had spoken with, um, Liz prior to filing this, we provided a week of data per quarter for the last four quarters, the data's consistent over the last year. Uh, so this is just a consistent sample, uh, from the last year, showing the, the peak times exceeding the onsite parking.
Do, does our staff have this data?
Yeah, yes, this was submitted with the, uh, minor engineering change application.
Okay, um, I, because I don't think that, um, planning board members have had a chance to review it, and I think, you know, we're not gonna vote on this tonight, so that's fine. I think that's something that staff can disseminate, so we'll have a chance to look it over before our next meeting. Okay, so Liz, did that answer your questions?
Um, yes, that gives, that gives me a little more of a, um, a better understanding, um, of the situation.
Okay.
And then, so I'll, I'll see what, uh, I'm gonna, um, give it back to board members, so back to you, Barb.
So, um, board members, if you have a question, please raise your hand. All right, I see Bill Gaffney first, please go ahead, Member Gaffney.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I guess the questions I have, um, are the, the three sites that, uh, at least the, maybe the one site that reserved, but the other two sites as well, what's, what's currently there with regard to what the surface is?
Uh, this one here, uh, at the rear is, uh, grass, uh, right there. Uh, and the slope, uh, just above it is tree-lined, we're not removing any trees, uh, for this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this, this one here is an open grass area, uh, just in front of the building.
Okay, and, and then the third one down below?
Uh, the third one down below was always land-banked parking, so there was a row of parking across the front, and it was left, uh, light on landscaping, knowing that we would come back at some point, uh, to build this out, the stormwater had already been installed for all of this, so it was just a grass area.
Okay, uh, so what do you, what do you, from an impervious surface standpoint, what are you losing?
So, this had, had always been counted in our stormwater and as impervious, um, so while it was landscaped, uh, of, you know, on a intended temporary basis, it wasn't, uh, included, but the net change is, uh, a change from seventy-three percent on site to seventy-five point six.
Okay. Yeah, how many square feet is that, if you could, is that the next one below, or no, I don't think so.
Uh, no, in terms of square feet, I would have to back calculate that. Uh, we have submitted a stormwater report that does document the, um, how that has, has changed.
Um, yeah, I don't think I was concerned about the stormwater report, but now, you know, kind of more of the, you're losing landscaping, which is important, particularly along Middlesex Turnpike in other areas, so is there a way to make up, uh, you know, the, the, uh, landscaping area that you're moving and, and putting then to different places around the site?
So, we, we did submit a landscape plan that shows additional landscaping, um, from, strictly from a landscaping point of view, and not from an open space point of view, we're not losing landscaping, uh, across Middlesex Turnpike. The, the area that was land-banked was kept low, uh, with nothing, with no trees or anything, uh, put in that, knowing that at some point it would be taken up, so the landscaping will still look the same, and in fact, the landscape plan that we submitted, uh, will further improve that, I believe I have the landscape plan, uh, here.
Yeah, I guess, I guess you hit a random, so I, I guess we'd be more concerned about the open space loss, right, with the?
Right, the open sta- open space still con- uh, conforms to the requirements of the PDD. This site is part of the Northwest Park PDD, and overall still conforms, and the, uh, open space that has been taken up on the site specifically has been accounted for in the stormwater report, um, and the stormwater management system.
And, and so I'd ask again, is there a plan for the loss, let's say, open space, I'll use the correct term there, to replace that somewhere else around the site?
On the site, no, there isn't, uh, the, it is still consistent with the PDD requirements. Uh, so there isn't a plan to put more open space on site, uh, the site is sort of max out everything that is, uh, green space, uh, is green, uh, anything that isn't needed for parking.
Madam Chair, if I may, so I think that, um, you know, what we would be looking for, um, in the planning office on that is just to make sure that we have a record of all of these incremental, you know, changes, so what are you saying? Is they are within the parameters of the PDD, but we need to keep a running tally of that, because if, once we reach, you know, that threshold, we need to, we need to know about it, um, as required by the PDD, so that's, um, so that, you know, it's, it's good information to have, so I think that's what we would, um, probably require, um, as part, you know, as a condition of this permit.
Yeah, so I believe we submitted the PDD spreadsheets updated for this project with the minor engineering.
But I think my point is that this is an increase beyond what was, was for the, your dedicated parking, right, so you're adding?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so now, now, I'll, I'll kind of, with that in mind, you know, kind of keep, keep there to say that the mid, that the open space that you're moving out, where are you gonna put that, so I guess we'll continue this, and we'll, I'll get to take a walk on the site and see if there's some opportunity around there to, uh, uh, to, to increase, uh, to kind of get that back, so to speak. Because, you know, again, all the stuff you hear now, particularly about heat islands and things like that, and because your lack of trees and lack of open space, uh, you, we're going in the wrong direction on this particular site from what we've had.
Well, just in terms of heat island effects, the, the, we're taking away, uh, lawn areas here, and although we're putting down pavement for parking, we're actually increased, significantly increasing the tree count on site around those. So there's not additional green space, but there is significantly increased tree canopy over those parking areas.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gaffney, and Member Sutherland.
Um, I just, I would like to second what, um, Member Gaffney said, I think I also would like to kind of just understand how we can get more, um, out of the green, but actually a question about the data. Um, when you have the check-ins, is the check-in per, like, family or per person? So in other words, if a family, if a family of four comes to Lifetime Fitness, are you counting that as four check-ins or one?
Uh, I'm not entirely sure, I would anticipate that it's individual check-ins, um, we can certainly get the answer to that.
Okay, yeah, that would be great, and then as a follow-up on that, in terms of if there's any data around percentage of times people are coming solo versus with multiple members, because I would think that would also impact the car count. I just would like to have a clear understanding of the data in terms of, it's clearly not one-to-one with number of cars.
Yeah, sure, that's a fair point, I would think it's likely that on weekends you get more family members coming for the, the pool areas. Uh, quite likely, the peaks in the weekdays, which are the highest, uh, are most likely individuals going to use the gym before and afterward.
Um, yes, however, I know that, especially in Burlington, Lifetime Fitness is a massive draw, because, um, you do have a lot of folks who enjoy the daycare option, so I could foresee that, um, being a really big draw for families, um, I've talked to quite a few folks who really enjoy using it, um, for like nights out, um, and those features, so that's why I just kind of would love to know that a little bit more, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Member Sutherland, Member Natola, you have your hand up.
Yes, I just had, uh, a few questions about the lighting. You said you added some additional parking in the back, so I was especially interested, is there proper lighting for the evenings?
Uh, yes, I believe there's adequate lighting back there, we're not intending to add any more lighting to that area. Um, there, there are just six spaces being added on the end of that, uh, the road that is back there. And so it should have adequate lighting from what is there.
Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay, um, Member Covino, you have your hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One question, I, I believe Connor, you said that, uh, some of the parking that you're putting in is close to the building and close to the front of the building, is that's gonna affect the location of handicap parking spaces at all?
So it lo- it, uh, impacts a couple of the existing spaces, uh, which we will, uh, restripe, adjacent to the accessible way to the front door. So essentially, no, uh, but it does, uh, replace two of the existing, just relocate them to the end of the row, just as close as they were to the front door. There's a, there's also one additional space because of the count that we're adding, we're required to have one more.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, awesome.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if Member Mpemba has joined us, but, um, Joe, if you're here and you would like to speak, please let me know. Anyone see Joe? Okay, well, then I have a number of questions. First of all, the data that you presented, um, when was that data collected?
Um, that data was for the four quarters in the last year. So the last one, or the most recent was in March of twenty-three, uh, January of twenty-three, October of twenty-two, and July of twenty-two, each of the four quarters preceding our filing.
Okay, I'll have, I'll need to look those over, um, and that will probably answer one of my other questions was, which was, is there a seasonal change? Because I know that with the outdoor pool and camp options, that there may be, I wondered if there was a seasonal difference because you're so busy and if you're busier in the summer, is there a change?
There is a seasonal change that you can certainly see in the, uh, summer numbers. But what we're seeing, um, in the data here in the last year is that it's going up quarter to quarter. I suspect that maybe as we move, uh, further away from the pandemic, it's getting back to pre-pandemic numbers. But my understanding is the summer, you know, the numbers that they would have now if we took data from the last month would probably exceed all of these.
Okay, um, can you explain to us what your employee parking program is? I don't even have one, so that's good.
I believe they do. I think Scott Ferguson of, uh, Representative Lifetime Fitness may be, uh, on the call.
I believe he is, and he has his hand raised. Mr. Ferguson, please go ahead.
Okay, and the employee parking program, is that what you're specifically asking?
Well, where do employees park?
They, they park, uh, in, in the parking lot, onsite.
Anywhere.
Well, we, we ask them to reserve, you know, reserve the closer spaces to the front door for our members and, and ask that the employees park on the, you know, peripheral.
And when you are open and running at full capacity, how many employees are present?
That varies from location to location. I would be happy to gather that info.
For this location, you can, if you don't have it now, that's fine.
No, I don't, I don't, right.
That's fine, you can send it to our staff and we'll have it before the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, I see that both Member Covino and Member Napola have their hands up, but I don't know if that's from previous or if you still have questions. Member, please go ahead.
I accidentally hit it.
Okay, all right.
Uh, I, I just wanted to ask the applicant and make sure that we had the information on, this, uh, what you're basing your additional parking request on, the swipe, uh, information as to whether it was per family or per person in whatever group it was, family group, whatever. Because if you're using this to count your cars, and there's four people in one family, I don't think they're all coming individually, so, or in, and if, if in fact it does reflect the swipes, for instance, four people in a group and there's, then there's four swipes, can you determine a way to figure out, uh, how many cars that represents?
So the, the, uh, the card swipe, it would be equivalent to a mom, right? Or a dad and his, you know, daughter and, you know, son. So that, the dad swipes the one time and then the, the children are, uh, on the family membership. So they don't swi- you know, they're, if a, if a, a dad and his two sons go in, you know, that's one swipe. Each kid doesn't necessarily consider a swipe. So that's a, that's a, a party, call it.
If a dad, a mom, and the two kids go in, is that two swipes or one?
That would probably be two, right? One for, one for each of the adult members.
Okay, that's what I, I thought you, uh, were referring to, so you can't try and count that as two cars then, right? How are, how are you determining from swipes how many cars you really need? Or how many parking spaces you really need?
Well, it's, you know, it, it's not an exact science, um, I just have to be honest, but, um, you know.
Okay.
It's just, it's a example, right, okay.
Okay, I guess the real big question is, have you run out of parking spaces?
Well, according to the data, yes.
According to, according to people walking in and saying, hey, you know, I had to park over at East Silver Shoe. Or, you know, walking out your front door and seeing that the whole parking field is full, has that happened?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of why we're here, you know, sometimes, members, you know, they, they drive around and they, you know, talk to someone and be like, hey, you know, it took me five minutes to drive around the parking lot, sure as there was some more park. And then, and that was stuff that we anticipated back when we were originally permitted, hence the bank parking.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And, and just for, just for the, just for knowledge or for you guys, approximately, um, just as far as Burlington City residents and, and their membership here, we're looking at about eight hundred and fifty-six out of fifty-seven hundred members are Burlington residents.
Very good. Actually, maybe they could walk, cough enough to walk then, no.
You'd be surprised, you'd be surprised.
Mr. Ferguson, this will probably be answered when I review the data, but just, um, quickly, what is your peak time during the day, during a typical weekday and a typical weekend? What is peak? Because I live really close by, I'd like to drive by at peak times.
Yeah, Connor, you want to zoom in on, on the table there?
Yep, um, so these are pretty consistent, um, in the four quarters, and I assume they, they still are.
I can't see that, it's really tiny on my screen. Okay, there we go.
So the first two columns are Saturday and Sunday, and the peak hours are sort of nine to eleven AM.
Okay.
To boil it down into just the, the two, uh, peak hours, uh, pretty consistent for Monday to Friday, that the peak hour is, uh, four to six.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but your nine AM hour during the week is also pretty peak.
It is.
But that's up there.
It is the, um, from seven, it starts picking up, but sort of eight to ten is, is pretty peak section two, and not quite as high as the PMP.
Okay, all right, um, so this is a minor engineering change, so I don't think we need to turn it over to the public, but I will ask quickly if there is any member of the public online that wishes to speak or ask a question, please identify yourself now. Staff, do you see anyone? No? Okay, then I am ready for a motion.
How about? Good.
Go ahead. This is a matter, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board Meeting of August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you.
Um, Chairman Larue?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Mpemba? Member Mpemba is on.
Yes.
Oh, you are, great, thanks, Joe. Glad to, glad to see you. Uh, Member Natola?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Okay, um, so thank you, and we'll see you on the seventeenth.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, um, I do want to, um, make note that, I don't know if you want to do it or we can do it at another time, but I do know that, um, Mr. Fremont Smith is on, if you want to give him time to give a Norblum update. Otherwise, he could, we could do it at our next meeting, but it's up to you.
If, if, if Mr. Fremont Smith is here, I think it's fine to let him take some time now and then we'll move back in our agenda to item A after, after Mr. Fremont Smith. Todd?
I'm sorry, I just got kicked out. Were you asking for me?
Yes, what you're asking.
You can hear me, yeah. So I'm sorry, Madam Chair, could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Um, I just was introducing you and saying you have the floor.
For, for which purpose?
Oh, sorry, just for your update about things going on at Norblum.
Right, and just for the record, I, I did hear part of, I didn't know it was gonna be here tonight, so I'm kind of underdressed and whatever. I, um, Lifetime Fitness is a critically important part of our ecosystem. They've got, it's just been a huge boon in Northwest Park to have that kind of first-rate facility onsite. Parking is oxygen to these organizations, they need to be able to accommodate their guests. We do have, as the board knows, some informal arrangements where we are parking, uh, employees off-site, uh, from time to time if they, if they need additional parking, there is some breathing room there, but they do need to be able to, uh, operate onsite. So just, uh, if, if I do hear the comments about heat island effect and trees, and there may be opportunities to plant more trees on this site or on adjacent sites that we can all talk about. And I particularly think it's important that the buffer along Middlesex Turnpike be robust, so you're not looking at all those cars. So that's just my random spiel, but we did, as I said to the board before, when Lifetime Fitness opened up and they weren't sure this was gonna work in Burlington, um, it is now one of their top clubs in the United States, uh, top five in the United States, and as Connor said, or, or, uh, I think someone said that there are almost a thousand Burlington members at the club, so it's very much part of the community, very much part of our, the reason people come to work in the office buildings is that they can go to the club and workout on a flexible schedule. So I'll stop, is there a way for me to share my, my, um?
If you're moving on to your?
I'll move on, yes. I'll move on from my.
Please do.
Yes, in the interest of time. So just, I thought it might be interesting to do a quick update, uh, Northwest Park, literally three minutes. You can see my, uh, I think I can work this after four years. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great, so literally four minutes, just Northwest Park, I'm always trying to keep you guys up to, up to. The park's doing really well, the single-story flex building environment is doing really well. We're getting great rents, people are coming to work, they're making things, they're building things. Third Ave is back to pre-COVID, uh, numbers, the restaurants are all above pre-COVID numbers, which is great to hear. The fountain's back on, it was off for about a month, I was yelling and screaming. Uh, our supermarket anchor is seeing about thirty thousand visitors a week plus, which is great. Lifetime Living, which I know the board is interested in this, this is our joint venture with Lifetime Fitness next door. So there's a hundred and sixty-seven apartments coming into focus. I've been working with Liz and the staff about organizing a tour of this building before it opens for the board. If the board's interested, I think it's personally interesting to see these things as they get done, but I want it to be pretty. I want it to have furniture and art and, um, before we take you in. The park that we talked about building in front of this building is actually under construction. It's a lot bigger when you get there than I thought it was going to be, it's, it's gonna be a really nice amenity for this neighborhood. I think that comment reflects in some way on the discussion about Lifetime Fitness. So if you do a site visit, just note the size of this public park that we're creating in front of, uh, Lifetime Living. The lottery is open for affordable units, as the board knows, we have twenty-three affordable units here. Sixteen percent, uh, seventy percent of those, or sixteen of those can be local preference under fair housing, federal fair hu- fair housing. So I would encourage anyone, and we've been working with March at the Council on Aging, we've had open houses, we've had library meetings, we've had virtual meetings. But this also applies to Burlington employees, the way that the law is written. So if there's a young police officer or teacher or firefighter who wants to be a Burlington resident and get a discounted rent, the lottery is, the, the odds of a Burlington resident getting this lottery, win- winning this lottery are very high on the initial lease up. So, and that's all in accordance with federal law, but I just bring that to your attention in case anyone listening is looking for an affordable unit. The lottery closes by the end of August, it's being managed by Maloney Properties, very, very pretty building. And to just recap to the board, we've, this will be, um, sounds like a lot, but it's a great community. Four hundred and seventy units, uh, built at Northwest Park since two thousand seventeen. And one thing we, we hear from the restaurants on Third Ave is that, you know, people, they may not, they may not go to the mall every day, but they go to Wegmans every day to come down to restaurants at Third Ave three or four times a week to get breakfast or lunch. So it really does bolster the, the whole ecosystem here, Lifetime Fitness, part of that, very much part of that. Uh, if I go to the next one, and then as the board knows, um, almost half of the people who work, who live at Northwest Park work in Burlington, seventy-five percent work in Middlesex Three. I'm going into a little bit of housing here because I know housing's a big issue with the MBTA communities discussion, and so I'm just going a little bit. Twenty percent are medical workers, very interesting, probably, twenty percent of tech workers, uh, very much renters by choice. They've got plenty of money, but, but they're renting because they like the lifestyle and maybe they're not ready. Maybe they're here doing a one-year fellowship at Leahy, or maybe they took a new job at Keurig and they need a place to live. So, um, from a tax standpoint, we're seeing about a three hundred percent plus increase in real estate taxes paid to the town. This is a lot of information right now, but just the number of three hundred percent is, is panning out over and over again from what a single-story commercial building would generate taxes, it's about a hundred thousand dollars to a multi-story, uh, apartment building, which is taxed at about twenty-three hundred dollars a unit. It generates about three hundred percent more taxes for the town, which is, which is good, and also it's not office, which is good. Office is having a tough time right now. Moving on, the Prode Varisal two hundred and seventy thousand foot lab deal, which we somehow got done before the market crashed around our heads. Every, both of these tenants are very excited, Prode is really excited to be coming, they're, they're building and building. We're, we're building a core shell, they're gonna be doing their TI work, it's gonna be another year before they move in. Varisal's very excited, but that building, again, if the board would like a tour of this building, it's a very large lab building. It's the first one we've done at this scale, it's really a cool project and, and just huge project. That's gonna be a big tax generator for the town and I think good for restaurants and dry cleaners and everyone in town. Pickleball, there were members of the board who asked me to think about pickleball. I took that back to the Norblum family and they said, you know what, why not? Why aren't we doing pickleball? So I said, okay, so we wanted to do it at Northwest Park, Northwest Park is a more public place, it's got public roads, it's got police details driving through. This is the park that the board, uh, knows about on Fourth Avenue, we spent a million dollars building this public park. Uh, and there's room on this park, um, to, to build two pickleball courts. So we're in the process of seeking permission from this board through Liz to, to build two pickleball courts, uh, which would be, uh, you know, available really to anyone, we could talk about that with the board, uh, public use. I think in this location it is appropriate, so we're very excited about that and maybe we'll do more in the future. It, it is a big thing, it's a, it's interesting, two pickleball courts, just so the board knows, that's actually one tennis court. So in the future, if a pickleball ever were to go away, you could turn that back into one tennis court, I didn't know that, but. So we'll be coming forward with that. Art, public art, this is something we started talking about, it's really shameful, back in two thousand sixteen, I don't even want to think about how far away that was. I finally got myself organized, I've got, I've got, we've got the New England Sculpture Association working with Northwest Park. I've got the Norblum family, uh, really excited about this. We've purchased, uh, the first piece of public art for this year. This is called I've Been Kissed, it's a bronze sculpture made by Marie Park, who lives in Tucson, Arizona. And this was done through a process with the New England Sculpture Association, NISA, NISA, which I know the board knows is working with Burlington. This will be installed this fall, it's gonna be shipped, it's already in a crate, it's getting shipped out. This is sixteen thousand dollar commitment to put public art, we're gonna put this in front of the Twist Bakery. And then we've commissioned for next year, uh, a granite whale, uh, from Tom Berger, who lives in Kittyry, Maine. This was a twenty thousand dollar buy, we're gonna be putting this at the fountain on Third Ave, which I think everyone said, where should we put the whale? And I said, by, next to the spout, put it next to the spout, so. So I just wanted to show you this, this is happening and, and the family's committed, I think, to doing this every year. I think our vision at this point is to create a public art walk, like a walk through the park where you could go see different sculptures. One of these sculptures eventually needs to go in front of Lifetime Fitness, is actually a pad that was poured. But we wanted to start this program on Third Ave because it's, it's most, it's most friendly to families and kids. So, um, that's it, that was my quick, my quick update, um, for Northwest Park, but things are good at Northwest Park. In the single-story flex market, things are good. And the hotels are doing well, the restaurants are doing well, supermarkets doing well.
Okay, thank you, Todd, for that update, I'm, I'm excited that you're bringing the artwork in, I'll look forward to seeing it. Now, where did you say the frog was gonna go?
The frog is going to go in front of the Twist Cafe.
Oh, okay.
A place where you can put it in the bush. A place where you can put it in the bushes, sort of hidden in the bushes. It'll surprise.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, um, I think we're now going to go back to item A on our agenda. Do we need to do a vote to do that, Liz, or can I just open it?
Um, I think, um, we need to, I don't know.
We didn't take it, we just did a vote to take B out of order, so I think we can just go back.
I think we're good. Let's.
So, item A is a discussion, request for approval of a minor engineering change. Twenty-two Terry Ave, Tevery Avenue LLC is the applicant. Um, staff, can you bring us up to date?
Sure. So this, um, project started out earlier this year. Um, so, and I looked last year as well. Um, so, um, they, um, the applicant requested special permits because they wanted to take the property, the vacant property at twenty-two Terry Ave, um, and allow, um, uh, you know, R and D facilities and, um, um, to come in. Um, and so they got special permits for their, um, research and development. Um, and as part of that special permit requirement, um, we, um, kind of said, okay, well, here are town center things. And so they have, um, provided the following. So this is actually just codifying all of those, um, all of those requirements. So sidewalk, town center lighting, um, pedestrian, um, improvements and connectivity, um, highlighting, um, you know, entrances, exits, and, um, they're adding a sidewalk, crosswalk. So, um, that's, um, kind of where we stand. Um, where we left off last meeting, um, was, um, the, um, kind of the, I think, the kind of material choice for the, the front door and how they were, they were trying to highlight the, the front door. So, um, I'm gonna, um, that's kind of where we stand from, um, uh, department standpoint. So we just need to get kind of finalized, um, exactly what I should be writing in the decision.
Thank you. Actually, before we move on, I just wanted to state for the record that I have watched the previous meeting and signed the required Mullen form. I believe member and Pemba has as well, correct, Miss Member and Pemba? I'm pretty sure he did. So, Joe, um, when you have your turn to speak, just please confirm that you signed your Mullen form. Okay, um, who is here representing twenty-two Terry Ave?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board. For the record, Christine Hung from Remer and Bronstein. Um, with me tonight as part of the applicant team, I have Kevin McCall, the CEO of Paradise, Noah Sparkman, um, Vice President of Development, as well as Tom White, the Project Team Architect. Um, Liz, thank you very much for that, um, in-depth recap of, of, of where we are today. I know you have a full agenda, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to, to Noah, who will run through our slide presentation. But, uh, um, from the last meeting, the, the board made some suggested, uh, comments with respect to the exterior of the building. We listened, we heard, and we feel that our proposed renderings, uh, incorporate those suggested changes. So Noah, do you wanna run through the slide?
Yeah, for sure. Um, members of the board, thank you for the time this evening. I am not going to run you through every single one of these items again, because the, the staff has done such a great job already. But what I would like to do is introduce our architect, um, Tom White from Hack Two Architecture, to just walk through some of the, um, the details that led to this design and the thought process behind it. Um, if you don't mind, could you bring us back to the first slide of, um, that, that shows the existing conditions? So I believe it'll be slide number four, and I'm gonna turn it over to, um, to Tom White here.
Okay, uh, thank you. I'm assuming I'm unmuted and people can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so I, I recognize that when we presented this design last time, we sort of, we probably didn't give the, uh, the board enough information about sort of what was, what was prompting some of the design decisions we had made to try to address the, the conditions with this, with this building. So if, 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 uh, if possible, what I'd like to do is just, you know, spend just a few minutes to talk about what we see as some of the, the issues inherent with the existing building, a lot of which I'm sure the, the planning board is familiar with. But just to give you a little insight into what sort of, what prompted our, our design strategy that we're pursuing here. So as you know, twenty-two Terry is an existing structure that's a large footprint building. This is a very simple architectural form. It's basically a box. It's a primarily horizontal-shaped box with very little articulation on the facade. So, you know, one of the things that's also inherent when you look at the structure, right? It has a very dated sort of cladding system, and it has a high contrast value between the color of the cladding and the window penetration, right? So what, what we've been tasked with as architects is really sort of, um, a, a challenge to try to meet the objectives of the owner, to really improve the appearance of the building in an architecturally meaningful way. But also, listening to the comments that we've, we've received from the board in the past on some of the design moves that we have made, and sort of really come up with a strategy, um, that I think addresses a lot of those concerns. So when we look at the building, you know, what we've done, and Noah, and if you could move to the next slide, please. I'm really just identifying the four sort of main challenges that are inherent with this existing building, right? As I indicated before, as a large footprint building, it's a primarily horizontal-based structure. The windows are horizontal. It's a low, flat, horizontal box. You know, the board is, as, as we know, the board is also aware, um, there's an overly emphasized loading dock really right on the front face of the building. You know, a third challenge we looked at really is that the building doesn't have a very strong entranceway, right? If we think about a building of this size, and you, you think about traditional architectural strategies of defining the entranceway, I think this building, the entrance is really perhaps too subtle for this building, and it really is awkwardly placed on the corner in terms of the way the structure could be repurposed for, um, maximizing its leasability. Um, it really makes it impossible to divide the interior use of the building into multiple tenants because the entranceway being on the corner really doesn't afford a great way to sort of, to subdivide the interior space. And I suppose the other piece that, that, that strikes me as, as inherent with this building is the ribbon windows. If we think about New England vernacular architecture, it's typically about isolated punched windows that are kind of discreet elements in a building facade. This building is the opposite. This building just has continuous bands of windows. This was the architectural style that was in vogue when the building was built. But as, as we take all these challenges together, we sort of were looking for, um, a solution that really finds a way to dramatically improve the appearance of the building, but really has to work within all of these existing, existing constraints and really find a way to sort of improve those. So if we could take a look at the last slide, because I think they're, they're slightly out of order here. Um, we, our, our proposed solution is really trying to come up with a way to work with those existing conditions, but also create like a very simple and contextual response that can improve the outside of the building, but also sort of come up with a solution that we think adheres as closely as possible to the guidelines that are, are present, uh, you know, in this district, being, you know, so close to the center of the town. So, so in a simple sense, our strategy is, is, is pretty basic. It is to reinforce the horizontal nature of the structure, right? So if we think about the strategy that we have here, it's a large box building. And to articulate that, we came up with a very simple color-blocking idea. One, this changes the dated color on the outside of the building, but it also works to add visual and architectural interest that we think is sympathetic to the underlying architectural qualities of that building. So we have like what you would see in this image right here is an off-white box that wraps around the top, then framed by a darker, warm gray box in the middle, and then a articulated paneled entranceway and a further darker color at the bottom, which really defines a third box. So we're trying to add this horizontal expression, sort of working with the, the nature of the building. The other main change that we looked at was coming up with a way to hide the presence of the loading dock on the front of the building. So you can see that the loading dock is on the right. Currently, those are dark bronze-colored doors in a light tan facade. So what we're proposing to do here is to actually change the color of the paint of the facade and make that entire loading area recess and really not be the main architectural feature that you see on the front of the building. And in conjunction with that, then work to emphasize the entranceway of the building, which is where we have that number twenty-two position there, and then create that ribbon form that wraps around and gives the entranceway a larger scale than it currently has, but also come up with a strategy that allows us to sort of create a meaningful entranceway to two different potential tenants that could be on the inside of the building. Instead of entering just on the corner, if you, if, you know, if you look around to the other side, there's now a much larger architectural shape that can define that entranceway. If we go to the previous slide, this is the detail view, this gives us a little more sort of insight into sort of what we're looking at. So, we've chosen to sort of use a warm color palette with very, with subtle differences between the tones of the individual pieces that we're articulating in the building. And we think this is a, a much more sympathetic approach to, to coming up with a way to, to modulate between the, the very sort of, uh, generic exterior appearance and sort of the spirit of the, of the, um, the overlay district guidelines. So, we actually have three different colors, a warm-toned off-white, a medium-tone warm gray, and a darker-tone warm gray. And that's contrasted with this, um, these composite aluminum panels that have a wood grain finish. And if you scroll up a little bit, you can see how that works with there. So that, so that we, we minimize that sharp contrast that you see in the existing building between the very light beige brick and the dark-tinted brown windows by introducing these gradations of color that sort of step down from the off-white to the warm gray. And then this is counterbalanced by this, this, uh, this, the natural wood appearance of this small overhang that works to define the entranceway. So, um, I could, you know, architects can keep talking forever about the things that they create. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna take more time than is necessary, but I recognize that, you know, our previous meetings, we didn't really articulate sort of the architectural rationale for why we're proposing what we're proposing, and sort of how does it tie back to the existing building, and sort of what are some of the reasons for the color choices and the, the way that we're articulating the different portions of the building. So, thank you for your time and letting me to sort of go on a, a, a sort of, a little bit of a diversion about sort of the, the reasons why we proposed this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Um, it, it was actually very interesting to hear what your thought process was. Um, I certainly did not, um, think all of that through, but I recognize that this looks significantly better than what is there now. I also recognize that what you're dealing with, you, you, you're dealing with a particular building, um, in a particular style. And I think that these color choices do sort of help to, for lack of a better word, hide the ugly stuff and emphasize the more attractive elements. So I thank you for the explanation. Um, I think it would be, I, I know we've run through all of the other elements that you're doing with the lighting and landscaping and sidewalk and fencing. I don't, I would like to know if anything has changed in that regard since the last meeting. We don't need to go through it again if it's all the same as last meeting.
Everything is all the same.
Yeah, it's, it's all the same as last meeting, and there are those, those elements are pulled directly from the design guidelines, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, um, I'm gonna see if staff has something they want to add before I turn it over to the board members.
Um, the only thing I would add is that at the last meeting, um, I was asked to double-check um, regarding the style of light that was proposed when they, um, gave us their cut sheet. And it is, um, the exact, um, it is the light that is, um, exactly where, um, the self-storage. It's that exact light style, so it shouldn't mirror the whole way down, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, board members, um, looking to see whose hands are up. Jess, please go first. Member Sutherland.
I just wanted to state that I also watched the last meeting and signed the Mullen form.
Thank you.
For me, but I think this looks lovely.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Member Gaffney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, what I would like to do is to, to thank the applicant on the effort that they put in here. Um, you know, at the last, uh, meeting, they, they showed a, 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 a completely different rendering with different colors who had really nothing related to the town center overlay guidelines. And they actually used a, a building on South Memphis Street as a reference point, which is, uh, you know, is, is kind of the middle of the, the general industrial area. So, I, I really wanna thank them for that. I think this really is, uh, uh, a much better, uh, version and appreciate their efforts. So, and I do like it as well. Um, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gaffney. Member Natola.
Yes, I just wanted to compliment them. Such a great job and such an improvement. Um, I think the colors look great and, uh, it's such a, an improvement. Same, just wanted to say thank you.
Okay, um, I can't see on my screen if, 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 remember and Pemba wish to speak. Sounds like Member and Pemba wishes to speak. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm unmuted. I, I've been having this problem with the muting of this thing. It's.
Okay.
Stay unmuted now. If I, if I, if I can't mute and unmute, I guess that's the problem. So anyway, I guess like, so a couple of questions, and it definitely looks a lot better than it did. Couple of questions I have about, do we, the lighting, do we have a, a, an actual diagram of the lighting? And the fence is, is the fence? Because I'm understanding they're saying that we, we require an offense on this thing, because I don't think we're requiring a fence on it, right?
We did require a fence at the last, the last time they were here before us. Am I correct on that, staff?
So, it was a while ago. So we had a, there was a minor engineer, there was a special permit that was filed, um, back in twenty-six, not in twenty sixteen, last year. Um, so, and so this is, I, this is kind of, and during that time, they submitted these cut sheets of the lamp and the fencing, and I think there was, um, discussion of a want for some type of, um, fence or something to, to differentiate the parking lot from Long Street. So I think it was decided that they would use something similar, like a wrought, a similar wrought iron to what is, um, that at other, um, other properties in the town center, and I think that was kind of decided on back.
Right. So, I, I don't think we required one. I, my recollection was that they insisted on a fence, but, so we said, if you're gonna do a fence, we'd like to see a wrought iron fence. But I think the, I guess what's left is that we don't, do we know that the height of the fence? Do we know anything about the fence? Do we see that, or know the materials? Do we? Now, I know we're saying wrought iron, but there's probably fifty million different types to this stuff. And, you know, the, the lighting, you know, we're, we're gonna require them to match lighting in other locations? Or just everyone put their own lighting? Because I thought we're also gonna try to get them to match the lighting on the storage facility.
Which they did.
And I know this is not a, this is not their problem, but I, you know, we, we mandated lighting at the Northern Business, but they, they don't turn in the lights on. So they put a light. I'm not sure if they even brought electricity out to the light.
Joe, I believe they said they were gonna match the lighting to what is at the storage facility.
Okay, that's what I thought, and that's what I was hoping.
Is that correct, staff?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. And the lights will be on, right? We're gonna, they're gonna have electricity with the lights. It's not gonna be just.
They're real.
For looks.
To be real.
Right. Because I think that's, a-again, not to bring it up here, but I think we need to address with Northern Business Machines that the lights are to be put on. That's why we ask for lighting out there, but. Um, and then the fencing, do we know the height of the fencing here? And can we have some in-point and exact rendering of the fencing and materials, just so that we can, uh, you know, so we're not, there's no surprises with that?
I thought it was a cut sheet.
Yep, we did submit a, a cut sheet. Yep, that is. And it's replacing the existing chain-link fence that's on the property.
Right.
There's an old chain-link fence, so we wanted to make it a little more aesthetically pleasing with this wrought iron-like, uh, fence.
And what's the, Christine, what is the height of the fence?
Um, I am not sure that, um, Noah, do you know what the height of that fence is?
I believe that it's about six and a half feet. I can get the exact detail in a follow-up with planning staff.
I can get the exact detail in a follow-up with planning staff, but, um, it will, it will replicate the, the look here. It's, we're certainly not going, you know, sixteen feet up or twelve feet up or anything along those lines. We're just trying to create a, a non, um, you know, a partition between the, the road and the driveway and, excuse me, and the parking lot for liability reasons, that's all.
Okay, so it's not, the fence isn't surrounding the whole property, it's just going to be with the, where the, uh.
The only portion of, the only portion of the fencing, because we've already removed the gates to the property, um, and the, the fencing along Terry Avenue. So the only portion that this is replacing is, is the chain link fence along Long Street. So it gives a much more residential feel as you travel along Long Street towards that, um, towards the residential neighborhood there.
Right, okay. And, and the height, we still don't know what height it is, you.
It should be six and a half to seven feet, would be my, my estimation.
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, um, Member in Pemba, um, this is Kevin McCall with Paradigm. I think the fence is six feet.
Okay, that, that's what I was hoping because I, yeah, it, it makes more sense. And I think the six footers are more common anyway. Anything higher than that's going to look a little odd, but, okay. Thank you, I appreciate that, Kevin.
Are there any other members that had something they wanted to ask? Okay, seeing none, I think we are ready to move on to a vote. May I have a motion, please? Anyone?
Yeah.
The bottom of page three.
Sorry, I was muted. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the request of the EP Terry LLC property owner for approval of a minor engineering change for property located twenty-two Terry Ave premises to allow for facade enhancements, repainting, ADA compliance upgrades, landscaping upgrades, install new decorative lighting and fence, and install a new crosswalk and sidewalk as reflected on the re, redlined site plan entitled Proposed Improvements for Twenty-Two Terry Avenue in Burlington, Massachusetts Prepared for Radio Onyx Inc. Incorporated, prepared by Allen & Major Associates Incorporated, dated June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, revised on July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following revisions, terms and conditions as.
Printed.
Printed.
Right.
Second.
Um, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Pavino.
Yes.
And Pemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate all your hard work and, um, hope that you find a tenant or tenants very soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where we're moving on to in here.
We're moving on to the top of page seven, which is, should be item C.
Twenty-six Beacon Street?
Yep, twenty-six Beacon Street, it should be item C.
Okay.
But it's not, it's actually item C.
Okay, item C is a continued discussion. Request for approval of a minor engineering change, twenty-six Beacon Street, Brickpoint Properties is the applicant. Welcome, who is here representing Brickpoint?
Hi, Madam Chair, my hawk with Brickpoint Properties.
Thank you, Mr. Myhawk.
First year, Patrick Vogel from Howard's as well.
Okay, um, would you like to give us this quick summary of what you're trying to do?
Sure, uh, so, uh, we originally permitted the, the board. The project had three components in three different portions of the site. And, uh, so if you go up a page or so, you go to the overall site. So the three components were, uh, leasing maintenance off to the front of the property by the entrance drive. And then at the two back corners of the site. That page not coming in, Caleb?
No, it is taking, I'm gonna stop sharing, I'm gonna reload it, so give me one moment, please.
So I'll just keep going on. So there are two portions of the property at the back, at the rear of the property, it's very deep off of Beacon Street, I'm sure you're familiar with it. Which on that plan that Caleb was trying to pull up are labeled areas B and C. One of them currently houses our compactors for trash and recycling. The intention had been to move those compactors to a new building, uh, at the detail point B at the back corner. There we go. Along, uh, all of these are along the ring road on the property. Anyway, the, the construction of the comp, the new compactor building, the relocation of the compactors, and then the conversion of detail area C to just be snow equipment storage, was a component of the project that was generating a lot of cost for the project, uh, given the current environment. So, uh, the most important part of the project for us, and I think also hopefully for the town and residents, is the front portion of the property where we're putting the leasing office, management office, and then includes a, a porch area that's a covered waiting area for, uh, the, uh, students on the property waiting for the school bus in the morning and for parents waiting for pickup in the afternoon. So we're still going to build that as originally designed and approved by the board. And we are just looking to eliminate the two other pieces of the project in the back two corners. At this location that Caleb centered on the screen, detail area B, there's currently a fenced area that has some Connex containers. There was a comment, uh, that we needed to take those containers away as part of the project, we're still going to do that. The fenced area will remain, it's going to be where we're going to put our snow storage equipment, piles that come off the trucks, things like that, um, when we're not using them during the summer months. And then the detail area C, which Caleb is now centered on the screen, exactly, that will stay as it exists today unchanged.
Okay, all right, thank you. Staff, did you have anything you want to add?
I do not, um, not, nothing significant. Just, you know, this, so this was, there was an original, um, site plan back in twenty-twenty. Um, and then that was revised in twenty-twenty-two, and so this is the latest iteration. And so I just wanted to make that point, and with that, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Board members, anyone want to weigh in or ask a question? Okay, I have some questions, um, since I've not seen anything. When will the Connex containers be removed?
Some of the materials that's in the Connex container have to go into this building. We're constructing the maintenance portion of on the back of the building as part of the storage component. So it would be after that building is constructed.
Can some of them be, be removed now and then just re, just keep what you absolutely need that will go into that building? Yeah, we're losing you. So, look, we'll try again in a minute, I have more questions. The waiting area size, um, on the front of this building, we, I know we had talked about it previously, I don't recall how large it was. When we were out there for our last sidewalk, we happened to be there when the school bus came. I think there was an entire school bus of kids just for this complex. So I was wondering what the size of that covered porch area is and how many people it will hold? Because if it's only holding three or four kids, it's not really helping much. Do we know? I, is Mr. Myhawk having technical difficulties or is some?
Yeah, he is.
Is there someone else who could answer or should we wait? Okay, I'm going to get my last question out and hopefully this will get, things will improve while I'm talking. I wanted to find out if there were any plans to replace the basketball court that is going to be removed when this building is built. Because that is a nice amenity for the residents, and I was wondering if there was a plan to replace the basketball court. Is there perhaps someone else here from Brickpoint Properties who could speak on behalf of Mr.?
So Patrick Vogel here, uh, for Howard Stein Hudson. Charles is calling me right now, maybe he can, uh, speak to some of that. But while he's trying to get his technical items, um, solved, as far as the covered porch goes, it's a six. Hold on a second, let me see if I can get him on the phone for a second. Hey, can you hear me?
We can hear you, I don't know who you are talking to.
Charles, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the covered walk is a, it's a six foot by, um, six foot by around thirty, thirty-eight foot, um, length, and then that wraps around and L-shoves. And then, as well as that, Charles, you can probably just mute yourself on the, uh, on the meeting. So it's a six by around thirty-eight, but then there's also room on the, uh, the, the concrete sidewalk along the existing driveway for, for kids to queue up as the bus comes.
Okay.
At the, at the moment that it comes. So like, let's say if it's raining or something, they could hang out under the covered walk. And then when the bus comes, they could hang out on the sidewalk instead of being in the exact, uh, drive lane previously where they would have had to stand before.
Okay, um, thank you.
Yep.
Basketball court, any information on that?
Um, so Charles just told me that they also added basketball hoops at the, uh, the tennis court. As, because I know this area is going to have the parking area, which will take over where the basketball court used to be. So they added some additional hoops at the tennis court area, which would help to mitigate some of the, the lost courts.
Okay, so when there's nobody playing tennis, they can play basketball there, right?
It's also a, a basketball hoop area and a pickleball, pickleball. So kind of like what somebody was saying, uh, earlier, you know, it takes up less space and then you can have the, uh, the basketball hoops to kind of be played on the other half.
Okay, um, are there any other board members that want to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, then I have one final comment before we bring this to a vote. This has been going on for a while, we had two different site visits to your property. I want to make sure that if we vote in favor of this tonight, that you're going to complete this project in a timely manner, because I don't want you coming back here in a year or two and doing this again. No offense, but, um, it, it's, it's a lot of time for our staff and for all of us to go out to site visits. And I want to make sure that this is going to happen if we vote on it tonight. Do you have a schedule?
Yes, that is, that is their intention, uh, is obviously, um, given the financials, they're really trying to make this, uh, this work in a, in a timely manner.
You have it, I think, when you would break ground. I don't know if you heard that question, do you know when you would break ground on this project?
Yep, so they're, they're, they're waiting for, um, some, some finalized contractor information, but no, there isn't a defined timeline that they have right now for breaking ground. But the intent is, uh, is an expedited, um, process to get this, uh, going as soon as possible.
Staff, can we put some sort of, um, deadline in this decision so that it doesn't drag on forever? A reasonable timeframe, um, perhaps even just eighteen months for completion, does that sound reasonable?
So that's at the discretion of the board, Madam Chair, so would, and also the more specific, the better. So is that eighteen months to break ground or eighteen months to get the final certificate of occupancy?
What would? Eighteen months to completion, please. That was what I'm proposing, I don't know what the rest of the board members think, and I'd like to hear from Mr., from Mr. Vogel if he thinks that's a reasonable timeframe for them. I don't want to be unreasonable, but I do want to make sure this gets done. And I see Member Sutherland has her hand up.
Yeah, eighteen months is, is agreeable.
Okay, thank you. Miss, Member Sutherland, did you want to ask a question or make a comment?
Um, is there an opportunity also for the timing of this to be done? Ideally, the time period in which kids are not getting on the bus?
I don't know.
As, because what, what, what will happen, what will happen when stuff is under construction? What will happen to the ability for them to have?
A safe place to wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, um, obviously the, the way that school is in session right now, that'd be a very, very tight timeline in order to get this completed. Obviously, like I said, we're going to work to try and get this moving and then obviously have to work around the, the children's, you know, pick up and drop off schedules. But, um, like, like we said, you know, eighteen months works for us as far as getting this, um, you know, up and, up and completed.
Madam Chair, I could, we can condition, um, that they submit a plan, um, a construction plan showing, um, you know, locations where, that would accommodate student pickup and drop off.
Thank you, I just, that's a good idea.
Especially because like best routes have already been determined. And if there's any change to the location of pickup or drop off, that would be, I think, very disruptive.
Yes, thanks for bringing that up. That was a really important point, thank you, Jessica. Okay, I think I'm, we are ready for a motion on this.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the request of the First Patriot Corporation property owner for approval of a minor engineering change for property located twenty-six Beacon Street premises to allow for the construction of a previously approved management and maintenance office and additional site improvements as reflected on the redlined site plan entitled Site Plan Beacon Village Improvements, twenty-six Beacon Street, Burlington, Massachusetts Prepared by Howard Stein Hudson, dated December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and revised to June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, consisting of twelve sheets, subject to the following revisions, terms and condition, terms and conditions as printed, including.
Sorry, as amended.
Oh, as amended?
Thank you.
And then do you want me to?
No, you don't have to read the rest.
Second, second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Um, Chair, but, uh, Sutherland.
Yeah.
Pavino.
Yes.
And Pemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Um, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We'll look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I think the next item is, uh, Matters of Appointment, item A. Is that correct, staff, did I miss anything?
You're right on track, Matt.
All right. Item A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point twenty point one, Massage Therapy of the Zoning Bylaws, one hundred and fifty-four Cambridge Street. Ease and Grace Massage is the applicant. Welcome, and who is here representing Ease and Grace? Oh, I did want to state for the record that I watched the last meeting and I am, signed the Mullen Form, I am able to vote on this item. To my knowledge, Member in Pemba and Member Sutherland have done the same. So, um, I think we're all ready to vote on this when it, when it's time. Is there someone here representing Ease and Grace?
Gina, are you, um, I.
I'm here.
There we go, hi Gina. Ms. Belmonte, thank you for joining us. I know that you came to our last meeting, we couldn't all be present, but those members, including myself, have watched. So I think we're ready to move pretty quickly on this. Did you have anything you wanted to add that's different or changed from your last presentation?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Are there any board members that have questions for Ms. Belmonte? No, I see no one. Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing in this matter.
Second.
Um, LaRue.
Yes.
Uh, Sutherland.
Yes.
Pavino.
Yes.
And Pemba. Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Yes, uh, in Pemba, yes.
Okay, that's seven zero, um, hearing.
Thank you so much.
Oh, we're not done yet, we have another motion, but it'll be.
I'm sorry.
Madam, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Gina Belmonte on behalf of Ease and Grace Massage for a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point twenty point one, Massage Therapy of the Zoning Bylaws for property located at one fifty-six Cambridge Street, Suite two fifteen, with the general business and central business districts, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Suite two fifteen with the general business and central business district subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit A attached.
Second.
Uh, Larue.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Okay, now we're done. Congratulations, Ms. Belmonte.
Thank you so much again.
We wish you much success.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, next on our agenda is item B. A public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to sections three point six. Fast food order establishment of the ninety six middlesex turnpike planned development zoning provisions. Ninety middlesex turnpike and Yas Chicken is the applicant. Welcome, who is here representing Yas Chicken? Oh, again, I should state at the beginning of this discussion that I. Member Sutherland and member Impemba have watched the previous meeting and signed the requisite Mullen forms and are able to vote on this matter. Is there someone here representing Yas Chicken?
I know we have a call in user too. If that person is calling user two and you're on your cell phone. You can and you're muted, um, you can dial, um. Star. Six. To get unmuted. But. Um, Caleb, do we see the gentleman from last week, from the last meeting?
I I I do not. Um, I've been in touch with them. I I informed them they were gonna of that this meeting was all remote. Um, they. Had confirmed to me they would be here. Um. Madam Chair, if you want, I can go through their updated floor plan, or do we want to wait um, to see if they might show up later?
Why don't you just tell us what has changed since the last meeting?
Okay, um, so they've basically just given us an an updated floor plan that shows kind of the walk in, the the queue space. Um, that you walk in here, you come up, you order here, um, away for your food. Uh, where they would then serve to you, fast food service. Um, and then the rest of the floor plan. Has not changed from the previous tenant, uh, Quidova. So they have the same amount and same um, style of seating, um, both indoors and outdoors. Um, so that that was kind of the only major change was adding in this updated queue area. Um, of how they're going to order. Um, and then the register and what's presented here is a little bit different. But doesn't change the overall space. Um, as far as the seating arrangements.
Okay, do, um. I'm not sure how we should proceed. Liz, is this something we can?
Maybe we table it and and see if they come, and then if they do not come, we can, I.
Okay.
Never had this happen before.
May I have a motion to table item B?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table item B.
Thank you.
Items six B, so that would be, um, Larue.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Okay, um, so then we're going to move on to item six C. A public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point two point six point ten restaurants of the zoning bylaws. Seventy five middlesex turnpike, AKA the Burlington Mall. Fiorella's Burlington LLC, doing business as Fiorella's Cucina is the applicant. Hello, and who is here represent representing Fiorella's?
Evening, Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record attorney Mark Vaughn with Reema Bronstein. Uh, here tonight representing Fiorella's. Believe that Ramon Carrion is with me as well, who is uh, the uh, principal with with Fiorella's restaurant. Again, um, we did make a presentation at the last meeting and explained that this restaurant concept would be taking over the. Uh, Palm Restaurant Space at the Burlington Mall. Basically, it would be uh, same concept of of uh, upscale Italian eatery that would be replacing. Same seat count uh, that is in there today. Same configuration of the uh, the outdoor patio seating as well, so um. Cosmetic changes that would be made, you know, inside. The restaurant and then, you know, on the exterior, there's also some. Upgrades that they'd be looking to make that are really, again, cosmetic uh, in nature, you know, to what they. Think would be uh, a a nice appealing view of the building um, from the. The outside, so uh, but again, they would not be looking to expand that. Yeah, that's an existing photo of what Palm looks like today from one of the skies. See the uh, obviously, you know, uh, the different paint style and uh, you know, I I think. Ramon and his team are looking to um, you know. Upgrade the exterior a little bit um, as part of that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, and I should have mentioned at the beginning of this item that I, member Impemba. And member Sutherland watched the previous meeting and signed the Mullen forms and therefore able to vote on this matter. Thank you. Uh, are there any members that have questions for Mister Vaughn? Oh, Jess, uh, Miss Member Sutherland.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I just want to say that I um, I have dined at Fiorella's quite a bit in their Newtonville location. Um, so I was very excited to see this on the agenda. Um, I've always enjoyed it, so I'm happy to see them come here.
I have a question. Is this the same? Um, company that has a small restaurant in Lexington, right off the center?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And there's one in Concord as well?
Yep.
Right off the center.
I'm very happy you're coming to Burlington. Okay. Um, any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there any, I think it is. Yes, it is. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, I think we are ready for a a motion.
Madam Chair, I see um, Jennifer, Jen, did you raise your hand? I don't see, I see it down. Never mind, Madam Chair. I apologize for interrupting.
That's quite all right.
Madam Chair. Oh, sorry, did I say something? Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing in this matter.
Second.
Um, Larue.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Okay, and member Chairman, or sorry, Chairman Chairman, I'd like to make Chairwoman. I would like to make a motion to approve the request of Fiorella's Burlington LLC. For special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point ten restaurants. Of the town of Burlington zoning bylaws to permit a hundred and sixty six restaurant. For property located at seventy five middlesex turnpike Burlington Mall within the general business in Aquifer District. Subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit C attached.
Second.
Um, Larue.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Okay, when do you intend to open?
Ramon? Well, we were trying to be um, getting there before the holidays, but. I think it's a pretty aggressive timeline and we're not sure we're going to be able to make that happen. Um, so if we can get in by the end of the year, we'd be um, extremely happy, but. Sooner than later, because it's just going to be some cosmetic upgrades to warm the space up and and give it that. Fiorella's uh, uh, feel and, you know, add some love, so yeah, really looking forward to it. I really appreciate all the support.
Great, well, we're very much looking forward to having you. Congratulations and welcome to Burlington.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the next item on our agenda is item six D. A public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw article four use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to automobile. Automobile dealer uses submitted by the Herb Chambers Company, ninety three Cambridge Street LLC. Before we move on, um, again, I, member Impemba and member Sutherland. Watched the last meeting and signed the Mullen forms, so we are able to participate on this matter. I also want to take a moment to caution both the applicant and my fellow board members. That what we are discussing tonight is a zoning change request. Not going to be discussing site plan issues. If the zoning decision from town meeting comes back and it is favorable. Then this applicant will come back to us and we will go through all the site plan things that we always do. But for tonight, we are just discussing the zoning change application so that we can make a recommendation to town meeting. So please restrict your comments and questions to that. Thank you. So who is here representing the Herb Chambers Company?
I am here, Madam Chair. It's uh, again, attorney Mark Vaughn with uh, Raff. Bronstein, representing Herb Chambers Companies in connection with the. Submission for a warrant article for the September town meeting. Uh, have John Welch of Herb Chambers Companies with me tonight, uh, also. Uh, Chris Barajas, Scott Blasick and and Chris Jones. Um, and I appreciate your your cautionary words, Madam Chair. I know that. Um, Vice Chair Rabbleport at the prior meeting also, um, you know, um. Remark that, you know, there shouldn't really be a site plan here. We we just wanted to give you a sense of what it would likely, you know, look like or 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 would. Uh, how it might lay out, so but but hear you loud and clear. So uh, what's been submitted is a a warrant article. To um, adopt this new use line. Uh, what Caleb just put up on the screen is. Two minor clarifications that were made to it based on input that we received when we met with the zoning bylaw review committee.
Can we make it a little bigger, Caleb? I can't read it. Sorry, sorry to interrupt, Mark, but I can't read. There we go. Oh, thank you.
Um, so one clarification was, you you'll see all those purple lines that are running, you know, north, south. Just to make it clear that this new use line would not be allowed in any other zoning district. Other than the BG zoning district and in the the water resource district, so. Um, I think that was our intent, obviously, by just listing that it would be allowed by special permit in the BG, but. Uh, it was felt that it would be um, crystal clear if you could just. List all the other zoning districts and make make it clear that it would be no, as in prohibited in all those other zoning districts. And then in the text itself, um, one of the other comments from the zoning bylaw review committee was just to. Again, I I think the language did already um, achieve it, but clarity is always appropriate and worthwhile, so we just. Wanted to put language in there, making it abundantly clear that the that twenty thousand square foot cap on any building footprint size would be. Uh, the total of any and all buildings. So if you were going to have one building with a. An accessory building, then it would include both. So you couldn't have a, you know, one building being twenty thousand square feet in size and. You know, a separate building that was three thousand. So it's inclusive of any accessory building as well, so. Think that clarification a- addressed that, so um. But again, I don't know whether the board would like me to kind of go through the the the. Method all, you you know, why it is that we're proposing this in terms of trying to upgrade and. Um, you know, modernize the e- existing Kia dealership, which obviously has been.
Pretty well in the last meeting.
Yeah, exactly. So I I think we kind of went through that in painstaking detail, if you would, but uh, certainly happy to. Answer any um, questions you have or address any uh, comments, but. You know, we do think that this will enable and allow for uh, an appropriate. Revitalization of of these properties, which, you know, frankly, I I I think would look. A lot better than, you know, what they do now, particularly when it comes to landscaping and and street appearance and uh. You know, I know Chris Jones, our landscape architect, is here too, but. It's okay, but again, I know that's more of a site plan issue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, staff, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, I do not, Madam Chair. I just wanted to let you know, Ernie Covino has raised his hand.
I can see that. Mister Covino, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just wanted to ask staff, if I may, uh. Is there anything we can actually add? This is going to be a zoning bylaw if the town meeting passes this. Is there anything we can actually add to this? To give a future site plan more teeth? Anything we can add to the zoning bylaw? Offer some protect protection for uh. Residentially used or abutting properties which are either residentially used or zoned residential. Was it, or do you think that that could be adequately addressed in a site plan?
Um, I think that, so I think that could be adequately addressed in the site. Plan, not not going into kind of site plan discussion, but the there is a a parcel that is residentially zoned and. Um, that parcel could not be utilized as part of their proposal, their proposed expansion.
No, I I understand that. I'm talking about abutting parcels that might abut any project that would be built under this. Zoning by law for it passes.
So so in that it not allowing this use to kind of keep going down the corridor, Ernie, I'm I don't know, I'm. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's why it's it's a little difficult without getting into the site plan, but uh, uh, protecting abutting residential property.
Uh, I did, so I will say that that would be um, a site plan issue, that that would, that that all of those issues would be. Um, handled during that back and forth during site plan review process, I think is the simplest answer.
If I if I could.
Thank you.
In addition to being a site plan approval. Bylaw is uh, structured, so that the use is only allowed by by way of special permit, which. It's similar to, you know, for example, the Porsche building, a a very similar um, category was adopted. And that was a special permit and site plan review, so.
Okay, thank you. Mister Covino, anything else?
No, I'll say thank you.
Anthony has his hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, and I understand, you know, the the. Technical piece of this is not considered spot zoning because it has multiple sites, but the multiple sites are adjacent to each other, I guess. Uh, unless the other, you know, the other car dealerships in town apply and to staff. So is this the only? Multiple lot or is the Mercedes dealership across the street would that apply or? Uh, would the Honda dealership apply or would the Porsche or the Audi dealership apply here?
Apply as spot zoning.
Well, is applied to with regard to uh, being in BG. Uh, as this as this, uh, I, as I understand this zoning to to uh, allow.
Right, so I think so, all those other, um, all the car dealerships currently in town. Except for the Mercedes dealership, which is on a PDD, a special use PDD. Um, all the new dealerships in town are preexisting nonconforming uses. And so they're they've continued that use, so they can continue that use for. Um, going forward. So in this particular case, there is a preexisting nonconforming use, which is the Kia dealership. Um, the Kia dealership wishes to expand their footprint, and this is the mechanism they are choosing to use to do that.
Right, so what I'm trying to do is get away from the kind of the the perception of spot zoning here. Uh, the other car dealerships that would apply under here that currently exist, if this were to be adopted. Are they in a uh, abutting uh, BD BG zone? Or is this the only unique lot that applies here? From a car dealership standpoint.
Can I try to address that?
Please go ahead.
Yeah, so um, but the other dealerships that you referenced, Mister Gaffney, are all in the IG zoning district.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Porsche and Audi are in the the IG zoning district.
Okay, so again, is 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 we, you know, you've, we've been through a couple of these before. Not necessarily with the car dealership, but with other ones where it's it it appears to be. A general zoning, but it's really specific to this particular site, because another other sites uh, uh, apply or could apply, so it's been. You know, tailored such a case, um, and really. To the technical appearance, not spot zoning, but it actually just applies to this one as well, so I'm I'm always. Concerned that what we're doing is with tailing tailoring bylaws for a particular parcel. Uh, and I've I've been consistent on that over the years, uh, on that.
Yeah, but uh, just i- as a point of information on that, and I hear you, uh, Mister Gaffney, and I don't necessarily disagree, but. Our intent was to to do that so that it's protective of the town's interest, so that uh. You know, what we didn't want to do is rezone this property to the BT zoning district. Which is the only zoning district in town that allows for automobile dealership use, because that same district allows for. Gas stations, car washes, um, auto repair facilities, happens to be the adult entertainment district of the town as well, so. We made a uh, an educated and informed decision, I guess, that that is not probably the best um, method to to go, so. method to go. So, you know, we think that this does it in a manner that is protective of the town's interests so that it can't be applied, you know, to other BG properties other than this one. But I know it has been reviewed by by Town Council, but, you know, I hear your point. It's a
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. Did you have anything else?
I did. Just one more question, Madam Chair, if I may.
Of course.
So if if we thought about another parcel, and I don't know what how that's zoned up on Millsex Turnpike, that was a new car dealership at many years ago, like a Burlington Dodge, would that apply as well?
It wouldn't apply.
I'm sorry, I'm asking, I'm sorry, I was going to ask staff on that. I apologize.
No, I do not believe that it would apply because it's it's been out of use for a long time.
It's PDD too, also.
It's a PDD up there. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. I have, I think because this is a vote that we are taking and we're going to make a recommendation to Town Meeting, I do think I want to hear a little bit more from some of the other members. But before I do that, I do see Sherri Ellis has her hand up. Sherri, would you like to ask a question or make a comment?
Thank you. I was waiting to be unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm in a spot where I can't really get my camera going, so my apologies. Thank you. I wanted to thank the applicant for listening to some of our comments at the zoning bylaw review. And I think we've addressed, I think our concern was is that adding parcels as we go to increase, you know, the building. So I think we've we've answered that, addressed that question very well. I have the same concern for, again, increasing lots to for parking. So is there anything in this that would prohibit a purchase of an additional lot to increase the parking?
That's a great question, Mr. Vaughn.
Well, I can attempt to answer that, and Liz can certainly clarify again, but I believe it does that you wouldn't be able to just buy additional BG zoned properties and use them for parking because the parking is automotive in in nature. So I guess that's how I would.
But isn't that exactly what you what Herb Chambers did at the Porsche Audi dealership before they built the second building? They bought the property next door so they could use it for parking?
I forget the the chronology there. I got to be honest with you. It goes back
Well, they had one building, they bought the property next door, used it for storing cars for a couple of years. I don't remember how many years, not very many. And then they went back to Town Meeting, got a zoning change and built another building. But they did initially purchase the property or properties next door in order to use it for car storage, parking. So I it's a valid question. I don't know the answer. It sounds like it's something that's possible because it happened before. Good question. Okay, all right. Are there any other members that want to explain their vote? Because when this goes to Town Meeting, Town Meeting is going to want to know why the planning board is recommending one way or the other. And I think it would be helpful for us to have some of that on the record. I see Mr. Gaffney has his hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not necessarily going to explain my vote, but I just have one more question, maybe to help myself understand this a bit more. Since this is under zoning, could the zoning board of appeals increase the 20,000 square foot building size?
I think they could because it's a
Dimensional.
It's no change.
I'm not sure about that. It's built into the the use. It's a the use table of the bylaw. So I'm not sure that you could actually increase that because you'd be increasing the use, right?
Well, I'm not changing the use. If you're changing, you'd be changing the dimension, I think.
Is there other folks on the line like, you know, from our zoning review board that might know or maybe can ask council or somebody that might know? That would that would be important for me if I do it one way or another.
It's a very important question, Bill. Unfortunately, we have to vote tonight because we have a timeline. We have to meet for Town Meeting. And I don't think Town Council is online, so I'm not sure we can get an answer to that question, but it is a very important question.
At the end of the day, you've got a board of appeals that apply the bylaw, right? I mean, I get that, you know, technically they could
Dimensional appeal, good dimensional variances.
I mean, they could grant a variance for a 60-foot building or something, right? Or but but I mean, you know, I think they're that's a separate process altogether should anyone ever want to seek a variance for anything.
It is, indeed.
Yeah, I think I, you know, just my history here in the Board of Appeals, and I know other members on Board of Appeals with with the Porsche Audi dealership to the parking lot. And then to build a building, there was a Board of Appeals decision to reduce the distance between a car dealership and residences, right, at the time, I think. Our car storage, I think, Mark, right? It was that was that was the variance at that point. So that's why I guess my where I'm coming from there. So I guess explain my vote here. I'm going to, without that information, which I think is kind of important to this, I'm going to have to abstain until I get more information on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. I would just, I think that it, in my opinion, it is clear that it is possible that an appeal could be sought. And perhaps approved in the future. There's no way for us to know how that would go. But I think it is possible. So other members that want to just weigh in or explain their vote before we take a vote? Mr. Covino?
Yeah, I was I was really considering voting no just because this poor stepchild has been sitting there since I've been in town and I'm sure I don't know, maybe Barbara, since you've been in town, that that really doesn't belong there. Has is having a tough time operating there, but I don't think they're going to, God bless you. They refuse the zoning change. They're going to go away. They'll just continue to operate like they've been operating, which is in in real cramped quarters where hopefully the car carriers have been pulling off the street, but a larger lot will give them a chance to do that. They've we've always had complaints since I've been on the board about them. Parking on adjacent lots that really aren't zoned to park on. At least this way, I think we would be able, hopefully, at least I would try to provide some protection for abutting properties that might not really have it now. So I think I think I would be voting yes because of that. But and as far as the Board of Appeals is concerned, my, you know, I spent some time there also. I would, it appears that this this wouldn't be a use variance. It would be a dimensional variance. So it sounds like they probably could do it and
I think you're right.
Crazy enough to or not, I don't know.
I think you're right. It's possible. Okay, any other members that want to explain their vote or make a comment? Okay, I'll make a comment then because I'm not seeing anyone else. Although I can't see Joe and Pemba's name on the list. So Joe, if you want to speak.
Yeah, I will. Go ahead, Bob. I'll
No, no, you go ahead, Joe.
No, I'm just, to me, there's just too many unknowns here, and I'm just a little concerned about, you know, creating problems down in that area. I just, I wish there were, I wish there were more tangibles here that we were, you know, able to count on certain things happening, but I'm concerned that that's not going to be the case. Which, you know, again, I'd like them to be able to succeed and grow the business and do what they need to do. But I'm just concerned that we have a lot of abutters over there. We have a lot of residential people in that area. And just, you know, I'm not at this point. I don't think what I've seen so far hasn't convinced me that it's it's a smart decision to move with a yes.
Okay, thank you, Member Pemba. I am also going to be voting no. I'm sure that does not come as a surprise to anyone since I have voted no on every single car dealership that has come before me in the past 11 years for the same reason and for some additional reasons. I am particularly concerned about this site because it does abut residential properties. I'm concerned about the possibility of a variance in the future. And I do not see this as a benefit to the town, so I'm not going to be voting in favor of this. But that, again, is just my personal opinion and just one vote. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this matter before we vote how we're going to, what we're going to recommend to Town Meeting? Seeing no one, I am ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, are we, I just want to make sure that Members Sutherland and Member Natola, if they want to provide
Yeah, sorry, I was unmute. I can provide comment. I frequently drive by this area. It's kind of backroads to my house. Actually, recently in January, had the opportunity to attempt to be a customer at the dealership. Also, I have a lot of concerns about expanding it, just knowing how difficult and crazy things are in that area in general. And I do, though, agree with Ernie where will will issues still prevail? If we vote no. So I honestly struggle with this one. I knew it was going to be kind of more of a game time decision, especially just hearing some of the other questions. But I am honestly probably leaning more towards no on this one.
I have I have one comment. Wasn't it at the at the last meeting? I thought they spoke about that it was actually improving the situation because the parking now was going to be so much better for the residents.
Again, that's a site plan issue. We will have to work that out if it comes back to us and the zoning change is is approved by Town Meeting, then we will deal with parking and circulation issues. But at this time, we can't tackle any of that. We're just talking about whether or not we want to recommend that Town Meeting support the zoning change.
You are correct, though, Tony, in terms of what the what was said before in terms of reducing the amount of surface parking that's out there.
And we are not making our decision based upon site plan issues because none of that has worked out and none of that is known at this time. So what we know at this time is that we're being asked to make a recommendation to Town Meeting as to whether or not this zoning change should be allowed. Town Meeting will make the final decision. We're only making a recommendation.
Can I comment on that just one moment? Barbara, I'm not sure it's going to influence the effect of vote at all. But I mean, you know, when we did the Porsche rezoning for that site, you know, we did show a rendering of what that
I agree. And that was probably a mistake at the time that I'm not going to repeat.
I'm just saying, you know, I our our goal is to improve the appearance and aesthetics of the
I have no doubt that you actually will, if if this zoning change is approved by Town Meeting and you come before us with a site plan, I have no doubt that we will do the very best we can in partnership with you to make this work very well, as well as it possibly can. I don't doubt that. I know that you'll do work on landscaping and all of that, but that's not what's before us right now. So any other members want to make comment? Okay. I'm looking for a motion, please. It is, oh, sorry, at the top of page 15, I think.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing in this matter.
Second.
Larue?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
And Pemba?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Okay, now whoever makes the next motion has to decide to read one of the two. You'll vote accordingly.
Okay. So.
Anyone want to do it?
It appears the second one would be the one you want.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend unfavorably on the petition to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws, Article four to address and define uses pertaining to automobile dealership uses submitted by Herb Chambers 93 Cambridge Street LLC.
Second.
Chairman Larue?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Covino?
Opposed.
So
No, no, sorry.
A member in Pemba?
Yes.
A member Natola?
So if you're voting, I'm kind of confused on the, yeah.
If you're voting yes on this motion, it means you're vote, you're recommending that Town Meeting not allow the zoning change.
I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
Member Gaffney?
I'm going to abstain.
So the vote count is three yeses, two noes, and one abstention. So three, two, one.
Can I assume just for when I'm asked to speak about this at Town Meeting, Member Gaffney, that your reason for abstaining is you felt you did not have adequate information to make your decision?
That is correct.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I can adequately represent the votes.
That's right.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. And we'll be moving. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if it's specific to the the potential for the the gross area to increase with the Board of Appeals decision. So if somebody asks to tell me that's exact the specific reason, that's that's not that was given.
Because you're concerned that the Board of Appeals could grant it or because you don't know whether or not they could?
Well, we, yeah, whether or not they can or not, if they if so, if I had it one way or another, I'd I'd be able to vote, I think, one way or another. But I don't think there was an answer here definitively that they could or not.
Okay, I thought they could because it's a dimension.
Okay.
Do staff, is that is that something you feel comfortable stating or is this something that you feel
I do not feel comfortable making a yes or no on the Town Council vote. I've always been told that any number in the bylaw can be varied by the Board of Appeals.
So perhaps we could get Town Council to weigh in on that. It would not change our vote, but we could present that information at Town Meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we've closed this here in this this public hearing, so we're not supposed to be talking.
I can talk about it just to ask staff to get that information from Town Council for us. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is Item 6E, a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw articles for use regulations to clarify and clean up numbering in the use table submitted by the planning board. Again, this item was discussed at the last meeting. I have, I, Member Pemba and Member Sutherland have watched that meeting and signed the law.
So Madam Chair, I'm sharing my screens usually. What are you guys seeing right now?
Let's concentrate on anything that's different since the last meeting.
There's nothing different. I kind of just want to vote. Literally just changing numbers. So that there's not the same uses, the same numbers in the use.
Any questions for staff before we vote? No, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has a question or a comment before? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing in this matter.
Second.
Larue?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
And Pemba?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
And now the motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorably on the petition to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws, Article four to clarify and clean up numbering in the use table submitted by the planning board.
Second.
Larue?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes. Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Ampamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Item Six F is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article Two, Definitions, and Article Seven, General Parking Requirements and Purpose as they relate to shared parking and transportation demand management submitted by the planning board. Um, staff.
Sure, so let me share my screen again. Um, so. Hold on, here we go. And what can you see? Okay, can everybody see and read my screen? Do I need to be bigger? Are we good?
Bigger.
You can also, you can also zoom in on WebEx itself too.
Yeah, that is true, Jess, you are correct with that. So, um, this is, I'm kind of. This is, this is kind of, um, the big warrant article that I was looking to bring. Um, so as you, if you recall, I separated it out into kind of four sections, Sections A, B, C, and D. A was definitions, B was purpose, C was, um, shared parking, and D was transportation demand management. Um, after, um, additional research, I, uh, I am, uh, decided to pull the, um, the section on transportation demand management, so, um, what I am presenting to you now for a recommendation is just the sections for definitions, purpose, and shared parking. Um, and the reason being is on the Friday after our meeting, I had some outstanding conversations with, um, Adrian Schreiber, who's a planner in, um, in Watertown. I took a lot of, um, their language for, for transportation management. I also spoke with, um, Stephanie Crumman from the Middlesex Three Coalition, which is, um, the Transportation Management Association that, um, our town is affiliated with. Um, and then a woman from Transaction Associates, who is, um, she actually, that, this is all they do, is transportation management, and they, um, they contract with Lexington and Watertown and kind of, they are the local hub of people that kind of do the nitty gritty work. And so what I did find is that I have a much better understanding and, um, kind of better ideas of how we want to, um, kind of roll that process out in the future, which I do want to bring to town meeting in September. So, put that, or January, sorry. Um, so put that on the back burner. It's not going away. I think that, um, you know, we hear about traffic all the time and I think it, it's, and you know, climate change, there's a, the bunch of reasons why it's, it's a, it's a good policy, so, um, kind of just put that on the back burner, but right now I just want to talk about, um, what we're, what I'm asking you guys to recommend today, um, which is, um, you know, first, um, Section A is definitions. I, because of, I removed Section D, I did take out some of the definitions. Um, so what we really need for the, you know, the mixed use, um, for the shared parking is mixed use development. And, um, TDM. So those are the two relevant definitions for what I am proposing for town meeting. Um, the purpose, this hasn't changed at all. This has been the same, um, since the beginning. Um, promote traffic safety, prevent surplus parking, um, um, and single occupancy vehicle trips. Um, advance the, um, efficiency of traffic to reduce delay, consider and allow convenient routes for pedestrians and cyclists. Um, permit emergency vehicles to reach homes with a minimum of delay. Um, and then kind of to promote transportation demand management measures. So, um, you know, we already have some of those in our PDBs. The previous purpose items on the, um, in the, in the bylaw kind of, it, um, they, they use, they speak about transportation demand management so that it's not that far off. Um, and I see Member Gaffney has his hand up. I'm going to go through it all and then I'll take questions if that's okay with you. So, um, this is kind of the meat and potatoes part of the, um, before this warrant article. Um, so, is a shared parking. So in our current bylaw, there is one sentence about shared parking, and it's that property owners can use shared parking within five, and share parking if they're within five hundred feet of each other. And that's the only sentence that exists. Think that, you know, we talked about heat island effect and, you know, extra, extra parking. And so this allows, um, our, um, allows us more flexibility and property owners more flexibility, so we don't have that sea of parking. So, um, so there's, there's kind of two components. There's onsite shared parking, so that's kind of your mixed use developments. We talked a lot about that, um, kind of thing when, you know, um, when we did, you know, Goodnight Johnny's in the, um, in, in the, um, Old Building Nineteen site. I can't stop thinking of it as that, but it's the shops that's in this park. I know. Um, so basically, in mixed use developments, applicants can propose a reduction in parking requirements based on an analysis of peak demands for non-competing uses. So, you can waive up to seventy-five percent of the requirements for the predominant use if the applicant can demonstrate, demonstrate that the two uses don't overlap. I mean, you guys kind of already do this in practice, but this is kind of putting it in the bylaw, making it official. It's, it's done in practice, but let, let's make it clear for the, for the applicants, um, what, what to expect when coming to us. Uh, and so those things need to be, you know, your data needs to come from a reputable source. ITE is a, is a reputable source. Um, and so, um, that's kind of for non-competing uses. For competing uses in a mixed use development, applicants may propose a reduction in parking where peak demands do overlap. In, in these cases, the planning board may reduce the parking requirement, um, of the predominant use up to only fifteen percent. And so, that is kind of the number that I, I'm pretty sure, this is the number that Lexington uses. Um, so, that is, um, fifteen percent. A little bit, gives, gives people a little more wiggle room. For onsite shared parking. The next portion is, um, offsite shared parking, which is kind of what we really want to promote in town. Um, so, um, so, and so offsite parking shall be, actually, so previously it was two hundred feet. I'm pumping it to five hundred feet. I think people can walk five hundred feet to their car. Offsite parking, um, may provided if the offsite lot has an excess number of spaces. Or if the applicant can demonstrate that the, that the uses have not, that the offsite uses have non-competing peak demands. So if, you know, you, you know, you have a restaurant and there's, and the lot is underparked, but the next door, the church, is only, you know, really full on Sundays, you know, you can, you, you can prove that, that's it, and that you have an agreement, but you can do that. So the amount of parking, so amount to Item C, the amount of required parking spaces being reduced on shots onsite shall be equal to the amount being provided offsite. And so basically, if you're doing mixed, if you're doing offsite parking as part of your parking analysis, it has to equal both sites, the parking at both sites has to equal the minimum required for the onsite parking. So it, it ends up being that there's, they still essentially have to adhere to the, um, parking count requirements for each use. So this is the part that I really like. We do it in practice, but I, and it's, it's not really enforceable yet until we get this passed. So, you know, we always tell applicants, they, they talk to us about, oh, we, we don't have enough parking, what are we going to do? And we say, talk to your neighbors, provide us with a legally binding document, and we can present it to the planning board. So that's what this, um, this provision, um, puts in our bylaw. That, um, that we, we get a, um, a legally binding document, and then the planning board may condition that their approval on the continued existence. So if the offsite parking property owner decides to change it, or, you know, sells, or, and that something else goes in, that, um, that would be enforced by the building inspector. So, you know, it's, you know, their site plan is, um, kind of tied to that additional parking. And if that goes away, they need to come back to us for, um, for relief some, or to find relief some other way. So they'd be out of compliance with their site plan. And this is for, you know, when we pass our form-based code. And, um, you know, it would, and it, I mean, it would, we don't have a lot of onsite parking, but when we, when we get that, um, you know, that, those mixed use developments with, um, blocks on street parking spaces can be used as, um, can be counted towards, um, uh, can be counted towards the, the parking count. So if you have parallel parking spaces out front, in the right of way, those can be counted. Uses sharing a parking facility shall provide safe, convenient parking while marked pedestrian crossings and adequate lighting. So, um, those are, um, this is, while the TDM was, um, from Watertown, a lot of this comes from the Lexington bylaw and, um, kind of tailored to our, our town. So, um, with that, Madam Chair, I think that's it. And I'll open it up to any questions you, you guys may have.
Okay. Um, Bill, you have your hand up. I'm not sure if that was from before or if, no, you, you said you wanted, you had a question.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, it, it goes back to seven point, uh, two point eight point two, your offsite parking and, um, spending a lot of time on subsection D. Um, the only thing I saw there when you, in your voiced it, but it wasn't necessarily written down, uh, is after the subject to enforcement by the billing inspector, I, I always think that you said they, they should come back to us for revised site plan. Can we have that written down in here? Or is that just kind of inferred?
So I think it's kind of inferred, so basically, it would render the permit null and void. So that means that
It has.
Site plan would be null and void at that point. And therefore, it would have to come back to us, so it's, I think it's, it's implied.
Yeah, I think we just, as we get caught up in some stuff that's implied versus, uh, you know, written down, I think recently we've got into one where out of reserved parking, you would infer that they would come back to us for a revised site plan, but it, it wasn't written down like that, so maybe, you know, we, we add something like that to, in there to say, it becomes null and void, subject to enforcement, billing inspector, and, you know, you have to revise site, you know, back to the planning board. Just a thought. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any harm in that?
I'm gonna write, I'm gonna take a, I'm gonna take a note.
Yeah, however you want to word it, you know. Something like that, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Uh, Jess, I see you have your hand up.
Um, I'm, I, I'm wondering, and my airbud might die, so if you don't hear me for a second, that's fine. Um, how does this, I'm trying to think how this would affect like future of parking lot areas with the mall. You know, we've been discussing through the, um, you know, with the Economic Development Committee about how we kind of plan for being able to utilize some of that parking for future build. And i- if we think about possibly something, something coming in that area that would have competing peak times with the mall. Um, and discussing, but, but being able to kind of figure out shared parking in a place that's so busy, I mean, do, do we feel like this? That, what was it, fifteen percent? In that circumstance, it could be reduced? It was only up to fifteen percent, it could be reduced, right?
Yep.
Do you feel like that, that's pretty good for kind of covering for in the future if we're trying to utilize more of the empty areas of the mall parking spaces?
Um, so the mall and, and the parking count is, and the mall, there's technically, there's actually like three parcels that make up the mall. And they have a master parking agreement that includes, um, you know, property owner Macy's property and Simon property. And so the mall, um, would have to adhere to this. But I think that, I mean, they're so overparked right now that they, um, they would be okay. And the other thing is, they would likely be building structured parking. And I would also say that it still requires that, um, that, that you still have to meet the parking, you still have to meet them with the. So are you, are you alluding to the fact that you think it should be higher than fifteen percent?
That's what I was, I was wondering if you felt if it should be high in fifteen percent. If we feel like that just kind of gets us into possibly an issue where places don't have enough parking.
Um, it's definite, so this is, this is kind of what I'm.
The standard.
So I, um, so this is what they have in Lexington. I think, you know, we don't want to get into a situation where we provide relief higher than fifteen percent, and then it becomes, um, an issue between property owners and tenants and, you know, um, our bylaw. So I think about legal ramifications, but with the mall and, and the amount of money being spent there, and, and there, there are large scale developers, I'm not really concerned because it is likely that structured parking would be built.
Okay. I just think of like, I, I understand that obviously Lexington is a bordering town, but also they don't have quite the level of visitors. People are more often leaving Lexington to go somewhere else than they are. They're, they're coming to Burlington. So I just, I understand that obviously we, we like to model around towns that are continuing to progress forward. Um, I just want to be cautious that we're not kind of modeling a town that doesn't necessarily have as much of an influx. Or as much open massive parking space as we do in Burlington.
Just look at, look, look at Woben.
Yeah. They're underparked, yeah.
They're, they have too little parking.
Right, and so this is, so the, what I, I alluded to this at the last meeting, I said, these numbers are totally open to debate. So, you know, members of the board, you, you know, this is, this is from Lexington. I, I wanted to kind of be a little bit middling in this because I know that we, we want to provide adequate parking, but we also don't want developers to be able to say, so basically, the fifteen percent is you will, will give relief of up to fifteen percent of parking, the parking requirements.
They can always ask the Board of Appeals for variance.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against the fifteen percent. I just wanted to
Yeah, sure.
discuss it, because like you said, I know that the numbers were like up for debate. Um, I just didn't know, like, because you said you've also looked at Watertown, right? And I know over in like, I mean, the, what they've done with like Arsenal Yards and all that area. I mean, do they have a similar number around fifteen percent?
Um, I have not seen anything specific to like, like parking like this, with, with mixed use. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head at this point.
I'm not against it. I just wanted to pose the question.
And so it is my belief that fifteen, the fifteen percent is not going to make or break a developer's project. And it's going to give the board, you know, enough wiggle room to say, hey. So I think, I also think about, um, one twenty Cambridge Street. So we have, um, all of those, all of those, um, condoized spaces, and we just, we just saw that, um, that market, the Halal m- market go in there. And it was a big issue with shared parking, and how do we handle that and peak uses? And I think that this would help with that.
Okay.
So if that, is that a good, is that a, a good example that's helpful?
It is.
Yeah. All right. Anybody else have any other questions? Joe, I can't see you on the list. Do you have a question? Okay, I'm not hearing anything from Joe. So, all right, um, trying to find the motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, actually, did you ask the public if they?
Oh, is there anyone in the public? Thank you, Jess. Who wants to speak on this matter? Seeing no one.
Okay.
Ellis raised her hand.
She did? Oh, there she goes. Sherry. All right, go ahead, Sherry. Do we need to unmute Sherry maybe?
Thank you, yes. Um, I'm slow on pushing the buttons on this little iPad. I apologize. Um, I, I didn't really see, um, the whole, um, warrant article from the beginning. You kind of scrolled down, talked on the shared parking. I had sent Liz some, um, comments from the ZBRC meeting last, whatever that was, two weeks ago. Um, and I didn't know if they were incorporated in there or not, if they, you know, they were for. Um, and I didn't know if they were incorporated in there or not, if they, they were for Liz's consideration, obviously. So I just didn't know um, if they were incorporated um, or not.
So the majority of your um, really substantial comments were in the TDM section. I believe that most of the comments up top were kind of grammatical in nature. And in that case, I really didn't have any issues. Um, and so those, um, I, I, I don't remember if what I'm showing you right now has those updated, but they, I will be incorporating those in.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, you're right. I mean, it was part in the, the TDM section, but, and I don't have my document in front of me either, so I don't even know. But thank you. I appreciate it. Um, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Anybody see anyone?
Nope.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Um, Larue.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
And Pamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Daphne.
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorably on the petition to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Burlington zoning bylaws, Article Two, definitions, and Article Seven, general parking requirements and purpose as they relate to shared parking submitted by the planning board.
Second.
Um, Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
And Pamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Daphne.
Yes.
Thank you guys so much on my first work favorable vote on my first vote. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So before we move on, we have to go back and see, did anyone show up from Yas Chicken?
Yes, I think we do have somebody from Yas Chicken, so we did table that.
Yes, I'm trying to remember where that was so we can take it.
Do I need to make a motion to take it off the table?
Yes, it's item
Go ahead.
Six B.
Hey, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item six B off the table for Okay.
Sorry. Second.
Larue.
Yes.
Rap, uh, Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
And Pamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Daphne.
Yes.
Okay, um, who is here representing Yas Chicken?
Hi, uh, I am, sorry. I overslept earlier. My bad.
That's okay. Just so you know, before, when you, before you arrived, um, Caleb showed us the redlined drawing with the changes that were made since the last meeting. They were relatively minor. We've already
Yes.
briefly discussed them. So I'm gonna give board members a chance to ask you questions now, okay?
Okay.
Okay, any board members have questions?
Just one, you say you overslept?
Yeah, so I, I, I was awake at 5:00 AM yesterday. And then at 5:00 PM, I said, I was like, I'm gonna take a nap and I set my alarm for 6:15. But I accidentally put 6:15 AM instead of PM. And the alarm never went off. And I just woke up like half an hour ago.
I thought you were still sleeping from last night.
Yeah, uh, and then I
No harm done, so don't worry. Any other questions besides questions about sleep patterns?
And, and I just had a kid the other day too. Uh, so I told my daughter.
That's a, that's a very reasonable.
All right, congratulations. Very good. It's a good reason to oversleep.
I'm at home right now, so if you want, I can bring you to it right now.
So does anyone have any other questions regarding Yas Chicken's application? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who has a question or a comment? Okay, seeing none. We are ready to
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Larue.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
And Pamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Daphne.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Yas Chicken for a special permit pursuant to section 3.6, fast order food establishment of the 90 middle six turnpike plan development district zoning provisions to permit, to permit a 77-seat fast order restaurant for property located at 90 middle six turnpike plan development district in Aquafire district and 90 middle six turnpike, subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit B attached.
Second.
Larue.
Yes.
Rap, uh, Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Pamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Daphne.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations. When do you intend to open?
Uh, hopefully within two, three months.
Wonderful.
Awesome.
Congratulations on your new business and on your new daughter.
Yes.
Thank you.
And welcome to Burlington. Thank you.
Yep, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so um, we do not have any meeting minutes. The planning um, staff has asked all planning board members to please stop by the office tomorrow to sign special permit pages because we need to get that done. And so please make time in your day to do that um, in your morning, right?
Yeah, we close at one. I mean, I think that we'll survive if you stop by on Monday.
Okay.
Okay.
What, what's the earliest we can stop?
8:30.
8:30 AM.
Bill, you have a question?
No, no, on this, but go ahead. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, all right, well, I have some other questions, but Bill, you have another matter you want to bring forward?
Uh, just um, a, a couple. I know last meeting maybe some other things we've been reading. And maybe on this meeting, the, Burlington's referred to as a city. You know, I don't know, you know, people are, we've seen that before. I think even on advertising information from some of our bigger uh, landowners. Uh, that's just a comment on that, but um, I think we missed it, I missed it the last time when Dunkin' Donuts came before us. Uh, probably would have asked the applicant to remove their signs off of the uh, the dumpster fence. I know they keep on putting them up and we keep on asking to take them down and, and they, they had, we had them before us uh, with the guy to the, the split.
Right.
He was before us, right.
Yeah, I can reach out to um, the, I can reach out to um, the building inspector on that. I would also say that one of the first things we say to applicants when they come to speak to us as staff, we remind them that this is a town, not a city and not true it as such. So I'm sure it was a slip up though, but honestly, I can't tell you how many times I've said that to people.
It always irks me.
Whenever we raise forgiveness.
Maybe it's the 500 apartment units that we have uh, in Northwest Park we put since 2017 would give it that impression.
Right.
So um, I, I actually had a couple of questions I wanted to ask Zap just for updates. Do we know what is going on with the Goodnight Johnny's site? I haven't seen any activity.
We have um, a lot of, there's a lot of rumors around what's going on. I think that they are, um, I don't have anything definitive. I've heard, do we, Caleb, have you heard anything definitive? I've heard
I, I have not heard anything definitive. I can tell you um, that, and I can try and find the dates quickly, that I have been tasked the building permit um, that they, that the contractor had to file um, after the planning board gave approval. So I know that came by me and I approved it. Um, and obviously put in the conditions to follow everything that the planning board had, had put, put forth. Um, I can try and quickly check the, the date of that. Um, and if there's anything new on the application of viewpoint um, quickly right now. Um, but that would be the only thing that I would be able to give as a definitive update um, as far as what's in our system and, cause that, all those are dated. Um, we kind of see what the last was done there. So let me, give me a second on that one.
Sure. And then
The other thing I can, sorry, but the other thing I can do is I can reach out to Melissa Tentakas to see if she had any updates.
People keep asking. It's, people are excited about it, but they don't see any activity. So uh, the other thing I wanted to ask about was the Lord &amp; Taylor site. Also not seeing anything going on there. Have we heard anything from them?
Um, no, but they have been actively involved in um, the um, working group for the mall zone um, form-based code. So as far as permitting, we haven't seen anything from them. But I do know that they, they are active um, with that. Um, and they are in talks with both Macy's and Simon and, you know, we actually had um, it was kind of a staff level, but we had a, a meeting with those, that group of property owners regarding, you know, form-based code and what, what the rezoning would look like there and kind of get their perspective on it. So that we can have a, um, you know, make an informed decision about what we put in that new zoning. So that, you know, we get what we want for the town, but also that it's economically viable so that we can get the product that, that, that we want to see there.
It's such a big focal point when you go into the mall, you know?
Absolutely. And so um, that's kind of, that's all I have. Sorry.
Thank you. Caleb?
Uh, Madam Chair, as far as back to the Goodnight Johnny's, um, I've seen as, as of August 1st, there was comments back and forth between Mark Dupell and the contractor that they have in viewpoint and there, it looks to be just asking questions about various specifics on the project. So to me, that would indicate that they're still moving forward. It doesn't give me a sense of the timeline, but that's, that's the latest I see in viewpoint. Um, that they're still, within this week, they're still communicating um, about the, the permit.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you. Any other members have anything they want to bring forward? Okay, seeing none. I am ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
And Pamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Daphne.
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, everybody. I think we got through tonight. I really appreciate you all making the time for this extra meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
We have another meeting in August, really.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.